Going to give everybody a second to come on board.
Hi, everybody.
Looks like everybody's here. I'm going to go ahead and do a roll call just to make sure. Dr. Anderson.
Present.
Ms. Cohen.
Present.
Ms. Darrenak Kokaks.
Here.
Mr. Frisch.
Here.
Ms. Keys-Gamara.
Here.
Ms. McLaughlin.
Here.
Ms. Marin.
Here.
Ms. Omish.
Here.
Ms. Bukarski. Okay. Ms. Bukarski, are you here? Ms. Bukarski, we can't hear you. Okay. Ms. Seizmar Heiser.
I'm here.
Ms. Tolan.
Here.
And I'm going to go back to Ms. Bukarski. Could you try your mic again, Ms. Bukarski? Ms. Bukarski, can you hear us?
She can hear us, but apparently we can't hear her.
Okay. Ms. Bukarski, can I ask you to close out and come back in again to see if that helps your technical issues?
She says yes, she's going to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Teamwork.
The interpreter for the microphone impaired.
Yes. Hi, Ms. Bukarski, can you hear us? We cannot hear you, Ms. Bukarski. I'm going to ask Ms. Mulberg to have someone reach out to you so that you may have to dial in.
Can you hear me now?
I can.
Okay, we're good. Hi. Sorry.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. And with that, this work session on the budget will begin, and I'm going to hand over the mic to our Budget Chair, Ms. Megan McLaughlin.
Thank you, Chairman Sanders. Just, board members, quickly, I had sent you an email letting you know that we really do want to utilize our three hours as carefully as possible. So the timeline for today will as follows. We'll have a 30-minute presentation from staff on where we are with the revised advertised budget. We will then spend 90 minutes on school board questions and comments related to that, as well as the superintendent's proposals for new spending, the nine items that we identified for you earlier. We will then spend the next 45 minutes trying to determine consensus among the board on those additional spending items, and we will wrap up the final 15 minutes with a review of next steps as we prepare for next Thursday's May 21st budget vote. So at this point, Ms. Corbett Sanders, I will turn back to you so that staff can begin the presentation. And then what I would ask is Ms. Riccardi Anderson, Dr. Anderson and I, as Budget Chair and Vice Chair, will speak at each section after we've heard from our colleagues.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin, and thank you to you and your co-chair, your Vice Chair, Dr. Anderson, for your incredible work this year on budget. I know it's just been really tough to have to do it twice, so thank you. With that, I'm going to call on Dr. Braybrand, who will introduce his team. And, Dr. Braybrand, you have until just shortly after 2 o'clock.
Thank you, Chairman Corbett Sanders. Good afternoon, school board members. I know we haven't seen each other, what it feels like for maybe hours. We've had a busy week working on return to school earlier this week with you scenarios. And we'll be sharing out with the community information about all of that today or tomorrow. I also know we're shifting our attention over to the Budget Matters as this budget work session begins, and that we'll be formally reviewing and approving the budget you will be next Thursday. So what I'd like to do today is go through this budget document. We have a few additional updates and commentary on some areas that I know have been important issues for the board. I'm going to let Lee Burden, our Assistant Superintendent for Financial Services, begin. But at various points during the presentation, I will be sharing some additional detail when we get to Slide 5. Marty Smith will be sharing some additional detail around technology as it relates to our return to school presentation from Monday. And I believe Mark Greenfelter will share a little bit of information that you all had asked about regarding the Office of School Supports. So, Ms. Burden, if you'd like to begin, we can start this presentation. We'll keep it under 30 minutes, and we'll be sure to answer board questions.
If we can put the slides up, thank you very much. Go to the next slide. This is the revenue changes from the advertised budget that was adopted early February. This chart hasn't changed since the last time we spoke about it. Our beginning of balance remains the same as we had assumed in the advertised budget. The accounting funding, of course, has been pulled down based on the numbers that they've conveyed to us. So the increase there now is 7.3 million. The state funding, this is based on the biennial budget, and it's an increase of 64.4 million. Federal funding, we've acknowledged the CARES grant of 20.8 million. We also were expecting a .4 increase in federal originally, so that's why it's 21.3 is the change. Fairfax City and other, Fairfax City's bill is based on air operational expenses, and since air budget is going to be reduced, their fees that they provide to us for services will go down as well, about .9 million. And so the total reductions or adjustments from the advertised are 67.3 million, or an increase of 104.9. Moving to the next slide. The approved budget expenditures changes total 104.9, a decrease of 67.3 million from the advertised budget. And again, of course, these numbers link up exactly with the revenue. We have to have a balanced budget with revenue and expenditures being the same. The enrollment and student population increase is based on projected enrollment at 28.8 million. That has not been adjusted. That remains in the budget. Benefits, contractual, base savings, those kinds of things have only changed by 1.5 million. We were, it was communicated that the utility rates in fiscal '21 would be reduced, and that savings is 1.5 million, so you see that reflected there. As far as salary expenditure categories, we have reduced the step increases and the MSA of 1% for a savings of 75.4 million, leaving 3.1 million, which is part of the strategic investments that we're going to discuss a little bit later. It's 2.7 million for the CIS or Instructional Aid, second year of that phased enhancement, and then the elementary school principal pay, which Dr. Braybrand will address in a moment. We also had some placeholder funds in the advertised budget that we won't be able to continue in the approved budget. That is a savings of 18.9 million, leaving 2.5 million to fund the strategic investments along dropout prevention and AAP programs. The other strategic investments, existing, new, and revised, have been reduced by 1.1 million for an increase of 6.3. And then the last item are the federal stimulus funds, and these are both placeholders to address COVID-related expenditures. 20.8 million in the CARES grant, those are one-time funds, and 8.6 million in recurring funds for a total of 29.5. Moving to the next chart, the strategic, and this is the strategic investment summary. We concentrated on four areas. You know, we've gone over this with you all a number of times. It has changed a little bit here and there, but the funds are going in four main areas: achievement, equity, social-emotional supports, and then we have a couple of workload issues for total strategic investments of 11.9 million or 42.5 positions. If you can go to the next slide. Here's a little bit more detail about those four categories and what's in each one of them. This has not changed, well, it's changed a little bit since the last time we spoke about it. We were able to reduce Item 3. It was originally $300,000, I think, and we pulled that back to $25,000.
Ms. Burden, can I just pause on that one, actually, on this slide? This is one of the slides, as I said, I wanted to just chat for a moment. Ms. Burden has listed, just like we shared with you last week, for new business, those 18 items. I do want to give this board and the public an update around three of those items, and two of them I want to talk about right at this moment. First, under achievement, Item Number 3, you had previously seen that item as a $300,000 item. We have removed the FTEs associated with establishing that department. The $25,000 there is a budget estimate for the reclassification of two positions. And I shared with the board earlier this week that I am going to find money within the department to take care of that expense, and this will be removed from the final budget that we will share with you on Thursday when you vote. We do not need additional dollars for Item Number 3. I also want to speak to you for a moment about Item Number 6, and perhaps at an appropriate time, I believe later in the slides, Teresa Johnson and Mark Greenfelter can offer any comments about special education resource teachers. That is going to remain as one of my strategic investments, but we wanted to talk a little bit more about how we're going to collaboratively implement those resource teachers through working with our Department of Special Services in conjunction with our Office of School Supports to really make sure we're addressing Tier 2 and Tier 3 needs of kids in schools. And we'll leave that conversation for a bit later in this presentation. And then finally, I would like to talk for you all a moment on Item Number 12. I certainly have listened with you and received emails from our community about my budget proposal and my strategic investments, and I was with you as we had our public hearing just the other day, this week, and the concerns being expressed. And I understand that part of leadership is listening, listening to all of our stakeholders in our community. I reached out to F A E S P leadership last night, and I want you to know, as I know all of you do, that our principals, especially our elementary principals, all of our principals are doing over and above work in this extraordinary time, and our elementary principals are certainly modeling that over and above effort. They also, though, recognize the moment that we're in. And therefore, I shared with them yesterday evening, the leadership, and I'm sharing with you now that I propose, and I will be removing this item before it comes to you for a vote next Thursday. I did reach out to the Budget Chair and share with her my interest, if board members and her in particular would like to, and I believe she is thinking about, I'll let her speak for herself, a follow-on motion that when we are in a moment, because this moment too shall pass, that we can look at compensation for all of our employees, that we can revisit this important issue of equity and parity for elementary principals. So those are the three items I did want to give you a bit of an update on today for the work session. Ms. Burden, if there's anything else on this slide that I have neglected, please let me know. Otherwise, we can move on to Slide 6, and I'll let you resume the presentation.
Nope, that's all good. Then the next slide shows, you know, the today's session, of course, and then the final adoption, which is slated for next Thursday, May 21st. And then we have some supplemental information that Dr. Braybrand mentioned. And the first up is the realignment of new specialization resource teachers to DSS. And I'm not sure if who's, if Mark or Teresa is doing this, maybe they are doing it together, but go ahead.
Am I there? Oh, I just got knocked off. Shit. We hear you, Mark.
Mr. Greenfelter, you can be heard. Go ahead.
I'll give it an initial try, and then we have Teresa's support. So what we wanted to make sure that people understood was that the new resource teachers were special education resource teachers, and they would be assigned and directed through the Department of Special Services, much like the current five that we have now, our staff out of Department of Special Services, and that they're just deployed through the regional team framework. I think it's really important to note that the current five resource teachers really focus on Tier 1 instruction primarily, and clearly, they're used quite a bit. And these new special ed resource teachers, if approved, would focus much more on Tier 2 and Tier 3 interventions and the services that go along with that, both at the region level and across the secondary team, as you can see, five elementary and two secondary. One caveat, I did want to mention that I think is really important. I realize there's a special education audit going on, and Teresa can certainly speak more eloquently to that than I can. And I want the board to be reassured, and the public and anybody listening, that depending on what that audit says, we can very easily, through the board and Dr. Braybrand, realign these positions if some specific requirements or suggestions come up that people want to take. I think the key is getting those special ed resource teachers for kids now is paramount based on the learning gaps and things that we know are going to occur next year. I think that's just critical. And we can certainly deploy them and have the flexibility to move them around as, certainly at the discretion of Dr. Braybrand and from whatever recommendations the audit may have. Teresa?
I think you did a good job of summing that up. I'll just add that, you know, these are teachers that would be providing coaching and consultation to not just administrators, but to teachers and working directly, shoulder to shoulder, with teachers and using a data-driven approach to supporting students, so just wanted to add that.
Thank you, Teresa. Thank you, Mark. And Lee, we can move on, I guess, to the next slide? Is there anything here, Mark or Teresa, that you'd like to speak to on this slide?
No, I think this just summarizes what Mark was talking about. As we look at these positions that currently, the five that are DSS, but are deployed, as Mark is talking about, through the OSS Region Structure Team, you know, these teachers provide a lot of professional development, a lot of coaching. And the piece that's really made the big difference is the job-embedded professional development that they could do, and that modeling and that co-teaching within the classroom. And Mark's team can certainly provide the data that supports that the special ed teachers that we've had on these teams in the last couple of years has made impact and has moved needle.
Thank you. Lee, I think we can go on to Slide Number 10.
Okay, I'll take that there, Dr. Braybrand. So this next slide and the next few slides talk about our elementary device expansion and the possibility for us to do that, given our reliance on distance learning and the possibility of distance learning throughout the summer and possibly into the fall. We would like to talk about our approach, and within that approach, it's a combined approach of utilizing new laptops that we would purchase along with laptops that we currently have in our inventory. The numbers that you see here represent about 78,000 laptops that we would have with three years of viability within our current inventory once we receive our new laptops for our FCPS ON at middle schools initiative, which the board voted to institute back in March. Within those 78,000 laptops, we would then have approximately 74,000, 75,000 available for students with an additional set aside of about 3,200 laptops for IAs, PHAs, and PhDAs. And we understand that we've gotten questions and requests from those individuals and those employees who want to better support students in our distance learning efforts. At the bottom of this slide, you'll see our breakouts for grade levels based on projected enrollment for our school year 2021. At 5th and 6th grade, approximately 26,000 students. 3rd and 4th grades, approximately 27,000, with our largest amount there, K through 2, at 40,000 students. And so you can see that we have approximately 94,000 students that we would need to support with devices in the coming year. So our recommended path for this fall would be to purchase 22,000 new Windows laptops from our current contract. We will be talking about, a little bit more about the possibility of other devices, but when we think about our ability to quickly acquire devices for students so that we would have enough devices for all of our elementary students, we felt that acquiring through our current contract would be the best and most efficient way, so we would do that. We would prioritize that distribution of new devices to our 6th grade students and our 5th grade students in our Title I schools. We would then roll down that remaining inventory of approximately 75,000 computers to students in grades kindergarten through 5th grade. We know that connectivity is another piece of this, and so we would continue MiFi distribution to those families who do not have, currently have internet accessibility. Here's a chart that identifies the costs for this rollout. You can see that for Grade 6 and Grade 5 for our Title I students, we would be purchasing 22,000 new Dell Windows laptops through our current contract at a one-time cost of $10.3 million. And we would utilize funds through the CARES Act to purchase those laptops. For Grades K through 5, we would repurpose our current inventory of Windows laptops. And then again, for our IAs, PHAs, and PhDAs, we would distribute technology to those employees using our current inventory. You'll see that for our remaining elementary students needing internet access and for any students who might need internet access for middle and high school as we receive new students throughout the year, we would then purchase up to 2,500 new MiFi devices at a cost of up to $1 million. And there have been some questions about the particular device that might be most appropriate for elementary school. And so that recommended path then for the coming year is that we're going to review device access and connectivity with our Technology Advisory Council. That's the Superintendent's Technology Advisory Council. We'll be providing an in-depth presentation about our current needs and some of the research that we've done on different devices for students as part of our FCPS ON initiative. We will also evaluate devices for K2 students, which may include touchscreen capability. We know that within our Chantilly Pilot Schools, our students in K2 have been using different types of devices, not necessarily in a one-to-one setting, but we have purchased sets of iPads for some students to use. So we would reevaluate that current setup for students, and that could be through an iPad, it could be through a Windows touchscreen computer, it could be additional Windows laptops, or it could be through Chromebooks. We would also then begin that device review for that K6 device that we feel would be most appropriate for students with regard to our new lifecycle replacements. And within that process, we would outline those resources necessary to support any additional devices that we would have on our platforms and the potential costs associated with that, device management, support and repair. Those are all things that we would find necessary if we would go with a different type of device other than a Windows laptop. And then, were we to decide on a different device or the same device, we could amend our current contract with our distributor, or we could certainly issue an RFP for new elementary devices for the FY22 school year. So that's a bit about our approach to ensuring that we have enough devices for all of our students in the coming year so that we can ensure that all of our students not only have access to the technology to engage with learning, but also have the devices to engage with the internet, or at least access the internet, so that we provide equity across the system.
And this last chart basically provides some estimated costs of the total budget needs in post-COVID or fiscal '21 that we're expecting right now. But again, this, these are estimated costs. And so these items would come from the two COVID reserves. The recurring amount of 8.6 million, which it will, will go up as a result of the recension of the .4 strategic investment for elementary pay parity. So that'll go to 9 million, and then the one-time CARES grant funding of 20.8. And this is information that, you know, you saw on Monday when we reviewed the plans. The PPE, that's about estimated at 5.6 million, and will come from the CARES grant. Health services staffing is .6, that's recurring. Technology, computers at 10.3. Recall that when we discussed this Monday, we were thinking more along the lines of doing a lease option, but that, it's been determined that a better use of the CARES grant funds would be for, for those 22,000 devices that Mr. Smith just talked about, and that's 10.3 million. We also have some technology connectivity in the form of MiFi's. There's the actual cost of the devices, which is an eligible expense out of the CARES grant, and is about 300,000, and then there, actually, it's 250,000, that's rounded to the nearest .1. And then the connectivity is a plan that is a recurring cost, and like about 750,000, those two together, not rounded, is about $1 million. A full school-based technology support is 1.6 million. Full-time T-spec at elementaries that are greater than 750 is 3.9. We also have some funds for curriculum resources to come out of the CARES grant of 2.6 million and 2.1. The intervention and support staffing, we're still working on calculations for what that might look like and the cost of that. And then additional counselors at 2 million, psychologists 2.1, and social workers for 1.2. So that, that's 5.3 in recurring costs. So the total recurring is 12.2 million, and the one-time CARES grant is 20.9. But again, these are just estimates. I'm sure that these numbers and perhaps even some of these items will evolve over the next few months.
What's important there?
What's important there, Ms. Burden, thank you for summarizing that. We wanted to share with the school board, of course, after return to school scenarios, we need, we know, to prioritize being sure this board was loud and clear about having a device for every child regardless of the scenario that we have for next fall. And so we wanted you to see our device plan. We are going to review it with the Superintendent's Technology Advisory Council next Wednesday, but we would be asking you next week, when you vote on the budget, to support authorization for this purchase as part of our CARES Act spending. And we would keep you abreast, of course, going forward, even after you approve the budget next week, on what the actual items would be for our post-COVID-19 reserve. Again, these are just placeholders that represent preliminary planning. Obviously, that number is beyond what our current reserve is, so we would have to look carefully at what our final prioritization would be and keep you posted on our CARES grant spending. As many of you know, that spending does expire at the end of this year in December, and we want to prioritize those dollars for our highest priorities. And technology, access, and equity is our highest priority as we face the three scenarios before us for return to school. So I want to thank Marty and Lee and the technology staff for, in record time, putting together a plan that allows us to use existing inventory along with purchasing new computers for our pre-K through six elementary school kids and for those employees as well that we know need a device and want to support them. So thank them. I want to thank them upfront for doing amazing work in a very short period of time. And Lee, I'll turn it back to you, I think. Is there one more slide?
There is not, but I do want to correct something that you just said. You know, we are in close contact with the state and others about the CARES grant, and the application submission date is August 1 of 2020, and the award period is March 13, 2020, through September 30 of 2021. And under the tidings amendment, locality of school divisions have until September 30 of 2022 to encumber the funds. So, you know, I've heard that December 31 date, but we, there's some small business loans that have, of the CARES Act, that have a December 31 date, but not local education agencies. We have quite a bit more time.
Thank you, Ms. Burden, for that clarification. I appreciate it. So that represents our presentation. We'll be glad to take any board questions. And again, I think we've made it at the 30-minute mark. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Brabran, Ms. Burden, Mr. Greenfelder, and Mr. Smith, as well as Ms. Johnson. You made it in 33, or in, with three minutes to spare. So with that, I'm going to call on school board members. I have Ms. Cohen first.
Thanks very much, guys. I really appreciate how much work went into revising and revising, and certainly, I know this is not the budget that any of us were looking forward to a few months ago. So thanks for being nimble and being able to really work to direct resources directly to our kids. Sorry, that's my dog whining in the background. My first question was, in the line item that you have under the COVID spending, how many counselors, psychologists, and social workers are in that line item?
Ms. Burden?
I think Ms. Johnson can answer that.
Yeah, I believe, I don't have it directly in front of me, it was 20 counselors, 20 psychologists, and 10 social workers.
And do we have sort of a preliminary plan of where placement of those folks would be?
No, not at this time. There has been discussion that some of those positions might be needed to support. Most of them would be deployed to schools, let me start with that, but there would be some muted support at central level for evaluations and some other supports around the division.
Okay, and are those, is the social worker line item that's in there in addition to the other social worker piece that Dr. Brabran included?
That's correct.
Okay. My other question goes back to technology, and I know I've developed quite a reputation for being a curmudgeon about giving kids laptops, but I just want to say, you know, I understand that changing conditions mean that we have got to be more flexible in some of our ideas about how we connect kids, but I just want to again reiterate my real reservations about what technology looks like in the hands of our elementary school kids, in particular, our K through two kids. So I just want to flag again that I want us to have extreme security measures on any devices that we choose for these kids and screen time monitoring, please, for parents to be able to understand how these devices are being used, what kids are doing with them, so that we can circle back and even with our school counselors' address, you know, for digital citizenship and some of the effects that happen. So I just wanted to flag that again as it remains a real concern for me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Ms. Tolan?
Yes, just a couple of quick questions on the chart with the total identified budget needs. One is, I noted that we have reduced the amount for curriculum resources. I think that we still have in there a digital K through eight language arts and math curriculum, but we have taken out the social emotional curriculum. And just being really sensitive to what we may be looking at in the fall as far as trying to get the best learning possible to our students, whether we're back in school or not. I'm a little nervous about dropping that number. Wanted to get a little more information on that. And then the other question that I have is, I just wanted to really understand, I listened very carefully to what Marty was saying around the technology and the devices, but in the focus on purchasing the new laptops for grades five and six Title I schools, where are all those other laptops coming from that we'll be providing to the rest of the kids at school? How much are we relying on, you know, families to have laptops, and how much are we relying on getting laptops back that have already been distributed and getting them back and turning them around with the middle school FCPS ON? Just couldn't quite grasp all those numbers.
So I can answer the question about the technology. So the numbers that we highlighted here are the numbers that we estimate after we've taken into consideration not being able to give back certain computers, certain computers that may not be viable for us to use. These are the computers that we currently have provided to our middle school students and to our elementary students. We do still have some devices that have not been shared with individuals. So at the end of the day, we would have more than 80,000 students, or 80,000 computers available. And so this is our best estimate of those computers that, again, may not come back and/or may not be viable. And so we would then need to order an additional 20,000, 22,000 computers to ensure that we had enough for all of our elementary students. And again, we would start with our rollout to all sixth graders across the division, and then those remaining that were of that new rollout of new Dells would then go to our fifth graders in our Title I schools. And then we would start with our newest computers that we have remaining in our inventory and roll those down all the way to kindergarten. So parents would not have to rely upon their own devices. These would be devices from Fairfax County schools. And it's just the continuous roll-down that we've been doing with devices since we instituted FCPS ON at the high school level.
Ms. Tolan, on your other question, we didn't reduce the amount as much as we broke out. If you look back on that chart, we broke out curriculum resources for K8, language arts and math, and then we broke out one line down, the social emotional curriculum. So Ms. Burden, correct me if I'm wrong, but the total is actually the same amount, we just broke it out for clarity for board purposes. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you, I see that.
Could we please ask, excuse me, this is Tammy, I don't mean to interrupt, but I would love the slides that the board members are referring to put up there. That would be helpful. Thank you so much.
So my only other comment that I would like to make is, this is on slide 14, still on slide 14, that as we even pointed out, our total numbers for the post-COVID-19 reserve and for the CARES grant, those are like the total number we have available. And given the number of uncertainties that we had in our discussions on Monday afternoon about what is happening with this virus and how we're moving forward, I guess at this point, I'm feeling very uncomfortable, a feeling like we've stated where all this money is going. And I know these are estimates, but I'm really feeling like we need to kind of hold some money in reserve for, you know, unknown items that are going to come up as we, you know, try to be as strategic as possible to get, you know, the ultimate learning experience for all of our students. And that's just really a comment.
Ms. Tolan, if I could speak to that real quickly, we absolutely understand the tension, right? We're trying to bring you our best planning and the estimates of what that dollars look like, along with the need to begin to execute in the sense with devices, that if we're going to have devices for when kids return, we've got to make decisions now to be able to execute contracts. So that is a bit of a tension. I do want to remind the board that the governor is part of the CARES Act, got a substantial amount of money to distribute to school districts at his discretion. The Secretary of Education has reached out to me. I have shared with him that Fairfax County needs to be a part, a real part of the distribution. The criteria is for those areas most impacted by COVID-19. We absolutely have the data to support that we are an impacted area. So I am looking forward to hearing good news from the governor's office and the Secretary of Education about what additional dollars will be coming to FCPS. We just don't have those numbers right now, but we hope to soon. But we do need to do a careful calibration of what dollars we have. We're not proposing for the board to vote on any of this today, but we are asking next Thursday, after we review this with the technology council, to move forward on the device and equity of access piece, which we have prioritized as our first part, our first link, if you will, to our return to school options. Thank you.
Ms. Tolan?
Thank you. And, you know, I am of full support of making sure that all of our students have the technology that they need to move forward, so I wasn't trying to imply that. And thanks for all of your work in the planning, and I will let the next board member ask some questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Dr. Anderson?
Thank you. Just trying to get my screen up here, and I'm not being successful. Okay, thank you. I appreciate all of the new information that has been shared, and again, for redoing this all over again. I'm so excited. Supports in the areas of technology because we do know it's an issue now, and it's an issue that's going to continue to happen, and I'm glad that we are getting ahead of that. I have some questions, and I'd like to start with the chart that is on page five. I have a question regarding the establishment of the Department of School Improvement and Support. I know that's been reduced from what it was originally 300,000 and 25K, but I still need to build some understanding regarding where is that 25K now coming from, that it's not part of this budget?
Sure. Dr. Anderson, I've directed Ms. Burden to work with that department and find the savings within the department as we move forward to handle that expense. And I'm confident that we will find that expense using existing dollars, no new dollars. Ms. Burden, did you want to add anything?
No, you're correct.
And these savings are expected to be available every year as we add the staff position?
We're not adding any staff positions as part of this. So the, when we calculate the fiscal '22 base budget, it'll already be established and continue forward.
Dr. Anderson, just to be clear, whatever we cut will be reupping dollars in that department that will not be gotten back unless we add it to a future budget. We'll have to cut 25,000 or less from that department to cover the cost, and we will find those savings. If you need me to make sure you know where they come from, we can do that as a follow-up.
I would. I would like that information because here's my concern. I think you've done a really good job in responding to what you've heard during the budget hearings and what you've heard from us regarding how we are expecting for everyone to move forward about compensation packages. You have rescinded the elementary principal pay in response to what you've heard, and I think that that is the right thing to do in this climate. And I do want to also clarify that as a former elementary school principal, I realize the workload that has been happening for those principals, not just during this time, but at all times, and they deserve that. But in this climate where we're not able to move forward to increase compensation for anyone else, and I understand the difference between the compensation and parity, it's just in this climate that we're in, it's just not the right timing. And so I'm having the same question, is this the right timing to use these savings in this area? Should those savings be invested elsewhere that you have found in this department?
I certainly respect that, and I would just say this restructuring is going to help us better deal with the equity gaps that we know are only going to be larger. And I'm confident that part of the work that the board asked me to do is to look at workload. We redistributed workload, and we have created really folks with a track record of achievement in closing equity gaps to really be able to move forward. So I think it is a small, it is a great return on investment, and it's money that we can find in our existing dollars, not in new budget dollars, which reflects the reality you've talked about, and I still believe it's the right way to go going forward. But I certainly understand your concerns, and I appreciate your feedback on me trying to listen to the board, listen to the community, and work to modify and adapt my request.
And speaking of that request, going back to that item 12, one of the things I would like for us to consider, and I'm not sure if this is the right time or sometime later on in the agenda, is to repurpose those funds, because I'm not sure how they've not been recaptured, but I'd like to offer this along with a number of my colleagues, and whatever makes sense, either an amendment or follow-on to repurpose those funds to be allocated towards counseling positions. So I just want to put that out there for right now. One other question that I have is, I've also noticed that the ESBIT, the rate, I think it's been changed so that there is one at every school, and I just had a question regarding whether or not, regarding the workload actually, and that's my time. So I'll go for go-back.
So, Dr. Anderson, I would like the, I'd like Mr. or Ms. Burden or Dr. Brabran to respond to your questions.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Burden.
Regarding the ESBIT, we need 13.5 additional positions to have one full-time ESBIT at every elementary school. As far as the T-spec go, we would need an additional 23.5 to have one full-time T-spec at all elementary schools that are greater than 750 in projected enrollment, and that would leave a .5 T-spec at the elementary schools that have less than 750 projected enrollment. If you wanted a full-time T-spec at all elementary schools, I believe that would add another 40-some positions, so another 4.9 million, give or take. another 4.9 million, give or take.
Dr. Anderson, let me just speak to the, the piece here again. This is planning and estimates versus the final recommendation. Um, my, my, both of these are important positions, but as we think about what's in front of us just for the next few months, the role of the ESBS to help every single teacher in that school better use instructional technology is paramount. So that 1.6 million for the ESBS, because almost now, regardless of school, even the smaller schools, every teacher is going to need that instructional support. Um, I think the T-Spec would frankly be a more aspirational, certainly something we'd like to see, but we recognize we are going to have to make hard decisions when we only have limited resources. And, uh, again, we haven't finalized the number, but the ESBS would be the priority. And every ESBS in every school will have a tremendous workload, given that all teachers will in some way, shape, or form, regardless of our three scenarios, will need to use instructional technology more than they ever have before, and they'll need that support to do it.
And simply, and to add along with that for T-Specs, with the increased needs for, uh, break-fix support within schools with the added number of devices, uh, not only, uh, the new devices, but, uh, devices from our current inventory, uh, we would certainly need that T-Spec support, uh, so that teachers could do their work, do the jobs that, um, uh, are necessary for students, and, uh, that we'd have staff to address any of those technology needs that go beyond, uh, the professional development and the training needs.
I know I'm out of time, but I'd like a go-back, Madam Chair.
I've added you to the go-back, Dr. Anderson. Thank you. I'm going to go to Mr. Frisch.
Hello. Um, thank you very much for your work on, uh, the budget. I remember when the school board, when the new school board members were elected, and people would walk up to us after meetings and say, "Oh, they really threw you in on the deep end, dealing with the budget right out of the gate." So, uh, the water has been very deep these last few months, for sure. Um, at a previous, uh, meeting, the school board voted to match the county's approach to temporary and hourly staff pay, which ultimately, uh, would end up saving us a few million dollars. During our previous work session, I asked if the money saved had been allocated to any specific line items in the financial 21, uh, financial year 21 budget, and was told that they had not. I was wondering if that is still true, and if so, how much money are we talking about? Uh, and, um, are we capable of allocating that money for some of the priorities that we're talking about today?
So that's a great question, Mr. Frisch, and I'm going to let Ms. Burden, uh, give the detail, but let me just say broadly, I do think, again, one pot of money is that state governor's money from CARES that we don't have yet, and the other is, as you've correctly identified, this year-end, uh, carryover money. And I'll let Ms. Burden talk about timing and what she thinks the estimated amounts could be for that, which would be additional dollars.
Um, well, the, I know the expectation is that we would have, uh, a significant amount of, uh, funds that wouldn't be spent in fiscal '20 as a result of having, um, school closure. Um, but that is not the case because we also have a, uh, significant amount of expenses in the pay continuity that you mentioned, the, um, the, the premium pay for, you know, food service workers, custodians and the like, distance learning packets, uh, all of those items together have to be covered in the fiscal '20 budget, and we're not. So the difference between those savings for utilities, um, subs, those kinds of things, will first cover the, um, the short, the, the costs of the, the COVID response in fiscal '20. Um, because we'll be using all of the CARES funding in fiscal '21. Uh, where, even though the, some of the items in fiscal '20 certainly would be eligible for reimbursement, we want to keep that 20.8 million fully available in fiscal '21, uh, for return-to-Learner initiatives and some of the things that we've talked about, the technology. Um, so we will have some carryover savings that we might be able to use in fiscal '21, but I do not believe that it will be a significant amount.
Ms. Burden, when do you think we'll know? That's what Mr. Frisch is asking.
Uh, at year-end in July, because we won't really know what's going to fall out until it falls out, which would be June 30th. And so, and then it takes us a couple of weeks, and that's when we bring the year-end package, uh, to the school board for approval.
All right. Uh, on the technology front, um, I, I know that, uh, we've heard from many constituents about the need for technology at different grade levels and whatnot. I've heard, uh, equally, if not more, from people who need connectivity to the internet. I'd like to know what we're doing in this budget to increase the number of wireless hotspot devices that are available for families.
So within this budget, uh, the, the numbers of wireless, uh, hotspot devices, the MiFi's as we call them, uh, is an increase of, uh, 2,500 devices. Uh, we feel that, uh, currently, uh, based on an order that has just recently come in, uh, this year alone, we've ordered, uh, more than 1,600 devices and have been, uh, providing those to schools so that they can hand those out to, to families, uh, once, uh, administrators have identified those families in need. Uh, we feel that we will have enough, uh, to provide, uh, connectivity based on, uh, the outreach that our principals have done, uh, and, uh, in talking to those families, so that we should have enough this year, uh, to provide that support. Uh, we want to build in more, though, and so having that reserve of up to 2,500 devices, uh, as families would need them. Of course, we would only purchase them as we would need them, but at least having the ability to have that reserve of devices, we feel like we could provide, uh, connectivity to those families who would request that connectivity from Fairfax County Public Schools.
How do we make sure that these families know to request that connectivity?
So, uh, that is, again, working very closely with our school-based administrators and school-based staff, uh, who are, uh, working very closely with, with families, uh, who are doing that individual reach-out to families, calling directly. Uh, and we could also use, uh, different communication methods. Uh, once we feel that we've, uh, reached the families that we, um, thought would need that kind of support, uh, certainly, uh, then, uh, do different kind, again, different kinds of communication methods to ensure that families understood that devices were available and that they would simply need to reach out to their schools, uh, for those devices.
Thank you. Um, last two things. One, uh, on the technology front, earlier this year, the board passed two follow-on motions related to FCPS ON to look at metrics of success and to measure fidelity of implementation, et cetera. Another to measure screen time and application usage. Um, am I correct in assuming that those will apply to the new technology purchases that you're talking about, even though they're, they don't appear to be specifically marked as FCPS ON?
Yeah, so the, these aren't necessarily marked as FCPS ON, but, uh, we have recently turned on, uh, some, uh, capability with current tools that we have, uh, to do some tracking of students in terms of their devices, in terms of the applications that they're using. Uh, we highlighted a bit of that, uh, earlier on, I believe in an answer to you, uh, Mr. Frisch, earlier about some of that functionality that we could turn on. We have done that, and we'll be looking at what those, uh, additional costs might be that we could certainly, uh, fund out of our existing, uh, budgets, uh, in the future. But we would be able to give families, um, more information about what their students are doing online, the kinds of applications, the time that they're spending within those applications. Uh, I've had some communications with, uh, CEOs of a couple of, uh, companies and, uh, with, uh, one company in particular, uh, who does provide that service for us. Uh, and they have, uh, opened my eyes about the, the capabilities that we have. And again, we could provide that support and, and that information to parents.
Great. Last question. Um, so on the subject of the Department of School Improvement Support Organization of that, um, I think reorganizations are more than an added expense financially. Um, they also demand more attention. Uh, and I consider time and attention to be just as precious of a resource as money, especially as we're navigating these uncharted waters of distance learning and potentially continuing that in the new year. Um, so I'm inclined to agree with, uh, Dr. Anderson, that this is probably not something to pursue in the short term. Um, but it raises an interesting question. You know, we've talked a lot about over the last year, long before COVID-19, how can we find savings in the budget so that we can reinvest in, in areas that board members think that we're deficient? And now we're talking about having $25,000, being able to find that somehow. My question is, if you can find $25,000, can you find $75,000? Can you find $100,000? Can you find $200,000? Um, you know, we've been clamoring for a review of the, the program budget. It would be nice to know what other money is at play to meet the needs that we're talking about with school counselors and social and emotional support. Thank you.
If I could, just real quickly, Mr. Frisch, that's a very fair question. Uh, I acknowledge that we are going to do more work on that, uh, moving forward to bring you that. Um, and, and it is, it's a question of priorities. It's bringing you all deeper into the budget planning process, which we're going to do in the fall with that program budget. I appreciate you and other board members, uh, supporting the additional, uh, uh, person in the budget office to help build that program budget out and align it more to the strategic plan. So I think that's going to happen. I would say, I recognize the board will have to make the, uh, uh, I, I recognize the board's concern about time and attention. This was a multiple-year plan with a group that's had a track record that I think is more important than ever, and I hope the board will support, uh, me being able to move forward with what I believe is a key priority for my administration to deliver on accountability that the board has talked about. So thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Bukarski?
Thank you. Um, can I, can I, I would like to build a little bit more understanding about a comment that was made about slide eight and the special ed resource teachers, um, how they will be technically part of DSS but deployed through OSS. Can you give me a little bit more? What does that mean? Who would they be held accountable to? Um, what is that structure?
So I, I could speak a little bit to this, Ms. Bukarski, and then Mr. Greenfield could add on. Currently, there are, um, in the regions, there are five elementary special ed resource teachers that were initially reorganized out of the Department of Special Services as, uh, the Office of School Support was being restructured several years ago because we saw the need to do some cross-departmental supports on these region teams to go into our intensive and our targeted schools initially, and then, of course, to the universal schools. As the region teams have developed and we've added additional people to those teams, we see the need for continued, uh, support and more support in the area of special education. Our resource teachers, again, would be providing, uh, similar to what the, the teams are doing now, uh, the resource teachers have done a lot of focus at this point, more on Tier One, and, and some Tier Two, a little bit of Tier Two and Tier Three, but what we're looking at is really taking a more, um, a more, uh, a stronger approach in supporting what additional Tier Two and Tier Three programs or supports might be needed for students. So, well, you know, with the fantastic thing about these special ed teachers is they've been able, and these targeted schools, um, have been able to focus a lot of their attention, not just on collaborative teaming, how does a special ed teacher, what is their role, but the instructional piece as well. Um, so providing that coaching, that how do you co-teach? How do you, uh, plan a lesson? Uh, keep in mind, we still have 40% of our teachers that are provisionally licensed teachers, so that has been an exceptional challenge for us. So I hope that gives you a little background on, um, I hope I answered a question.
Thank you. Um, I have another question surrounding the technology. I know that, um, you know, when we started on the distance learning this year, that we did give out a lot of devices, but some parents also opted to go buy their own kids' devices. Have we taken that into account? Um, if we're buying these for a possible distance learning scenario, may, maybe parents already have what they need. Um, is there any way we could assess that? Um, have, just, have we considered that to save money?
So, so I think that as it relates to equity, we looked at that at both, uh, high school and middle school, and, uh, it's important to, uh, at least provide the same type of device or at least the same type of access for all students, uh, to ensure that all of our students have access to, um, uh, our, our infrastructure, uh, that we all have access to the same type of device as it relates to, uh, SR or to, to the SOL testing and other types of assessments that students would need to take, uh, that utilize our infrastructure and, and framework. So, um, while, uh, while many families may have gone out to purchase their own devices, we would want to ensure that they all had access to an FCPS device. And we do know that within our high schools, that, uh, some students, uh, do use their own devices, um, but they all have their own FCPS, uh, device that, again, they use for, uh, those things where they would need to have access to our infrastructure.
Um, okay. I mean, I, I, I understand what you're saying, um, but if we are, if our goal is to give access for a possible distance learning, that instead, you know, of a more one-to-one down-to-kindergarten approach, which this board has not had the opportunity to talk about, um, I, I, I just want to put that out there. Maybe other board members would like a conversation around that. I don't know. Um, I am always open to, uh, having people use their own devices, if it's distance learning, if they've already purchased them, as I've heard from some parents have, and save us money, and then have the conversation for other uses for those devices, um, when we are in school. So I, I will leave that there. Will, will we still be assessing a $50 fee for, um, parents of each student?
So we've had that discussion about the $50 fee. We know that that is part of our refresh cycle, uh, and for the devices, uh, that, uh, we had, but would be purchasing the 22,000 devices, the new devices, uh, we don't think that, uh, it, it would be equitable for some students at the elementary level to be paying, uh, that fee, and others at the elementary level to not be paying that fee if, uh, the devices aren't part of, as you said, an FCPS ON, uh, approach. So, uh, at this point, we would not be assessing that fee for families because it's not part of the FCPS ON approach in terms of refresh. Uh, but again, we can always, uh, take a look at that, uh, in the, in the coming year.
Dr. Braybran?
If I could, uh, Ms. Bukarski, just one thing I want to share. You know, for a lot of years, this district was the BYOD, Bring Your Own Device District. And so we did have some success with that, but one of the struggles was, especially from a teacher point of view, different kids, different devices, some programs would work, some software would work. And so being able to go to where you have the same device, you can have the same software loaded. You, 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 you as a teacher, it actually becomes a little easier for the teacher to instruct the course. Um, I, I certainly think as we're doing the elementary, this is not an official FCPS ON, this is a COVID purchase. And so we need to be flexible. Uh, I, I think we would work to be flexible. As Mr. Smith said, believe it or not, this past year, as we were starting to ramp up FCPS ON more and starting to look at elementary, we wanted to look at whether different devices would be better based on the age of kids, or whether we'd give devices to kids at a certain age. And honestly, COVID-19 is sort of forcing the issue that we need to have, at least for our scenarios we shared on Monday, some sort of device access. But I think we would work with the community as we're still fleshing this out. We're just, uh, really, uh, weeks into this. If, if folks have a device with their kid at elementary school and it's really working, we would try to work with them on it. But we want to cover the bases. And again, this purchase is only the difference between our inventory and what we think we might be short on, uh, for our kid. Um, so we, we, we'd certainly look at that as an option about folks trying to do some BYOD at elementary school if we could.
I understand that, Dr. Braybran. It's just, um, because as you said, this is a COVID purchase, not a one-to-one purchase, saving money now, especially looking forward at the economic uncertainties that next year and year after will bring. I, I would like that to be part of the conversation, and I'm not sure I agree with the, with, um, what Mr. Smith said about the $50. Um, so I, I would like that, a little bit more conversation. I'll take a go-back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bukarski. Ms. Seismarheiser.
Um, thank you very much. I'm going to, I'm just moving my screen over here. I want to pick up a little bit on what Stella left off with briefly. Can you guys see me? You have lost the.
We can.
Okay.
We see you.
My screen went black for a second, so I don't know what's going on. I apologize. So I wanted to pick up a little bit for these, the new computers. I was just doing a little bit of quick math, and I'm a little confused how it's going to cover the needs because I had, when I had seen the latest numbers of laptops we've distributed, it's about 17,000, almost 18,000. I'd asked a question originally about how many laptops we had left, and the number I was given was around 12,000, but not all may be able to be used, which gets me around, and then we're ordering about 20,000. So that gets me to 50,000. How does that then get to the 77,000 listed that we need to get to our K6? Not including, this is not new purchases outside the COVID $10 million. I'm just kind of confused how we get enough to our students for next year.
So we know that when we're providing those devices to students, that we're trying to keep those devices either within the school or within the grade level. And so there are devices at our middle schools that we, that students are not using, and there are devices at our elementary schools that still haven't been shared with students. And so again, once we do the full roll down, once we take all of our middle school devices out of those schools, once we get the devices back from the middle school, we will then be able to, to roll that remaining inventory down to our elementary students.
Okay, so.
And with regard to exact numbers, we can certainly, I'll work with my staff to provide those exact numbers for the board if there's a question about that.
But the plan is to try to get one-to-one with our existing devices, considering the middle school purchase is planned for next year.
Yeah, so the plan is that once our middle school devices come in, we would provide those new devices to our middle school students. There would be no need for our middle schools to have their, their carts within their buildings because each of their students would have access to a device. We would then pool all of our remaining devices, purchase the new computers for our sixth graders and our fifth graders at Title I schools, and then roll down those devices to our remaining students. When we talk about the number of viable devices that we have, it's that these are devices that still have between one and three years of good life left in them. And when we look at it from just a perspective of wanting to think about our investment in those devices and wanting to get the most out of those devices, that it does make sense to use those devices while they still have that lifetime or and that, that service time left in them and push those down to students who need them. While at the same time, understanding that these devices may not be what's best for K2 and taking another look at that in the coming year to identify what might be the best device for K2 and/or what might be the best device for elementary students overall.
Okay. I want to shift a little bit to the slides that talk about the OSS, the new resource teachers that are to DSS but deployed through OSS region team. I just wanted to sort of clarify that the special ed positions that were added to OSS last year were to support tier one supports, and the students with tier two and tier three are the more needy supports that weren't necessarily receiving supports through that model. So the new positions would be specifically to support the tier two and tier three, but in doing so, do so in a way that would help build both teacher capacity for the 40%, especially teachers that are on provisional licenses, which is a huge number of our special ed teachers, as well as kind of build principal capacity to make our schools stronger and more consistent. Is that kind of the idea that the reason they're deployed through OSS but housed in DSS is to bring the tier two, tier three expertise, but at a way that was really supporting at the building level and in the classroom level? Can someone speak to that?
That's correct. That it is really about building the capacity of the building, ensuring that we're providing the expertise, training that's needed in a much deeper level. So you are correct.
Okay, so this is really supporting inside, but it's, it's different than the positions that were added last year because it's focused more on those tier two, tier three supports that I've been sort of until now really focused on by DSS that hasn't received additional funding outside of bits for 10 years. So it's really to get to a population of students that didn't have support from this sort of building level model. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, so that's, I just wanted to clarify how these were different than the positions last year. And then someone speak how these are different than the intensive resource teacher positions, why they kind of getting, getting towards the intensive resource for those, those in the sort of alternative special ed schools than these are for the ones kind of in between the tier one and those students.
Sure, the intensive support is kind of building off of the initial old project momentum type team or these region type supports. We are finding the need in buildings that need some additional shoulder-to-shoulder or job embedded professional development when it comes to some more intensive behavioral needs and sometimes embedded in that again, would be instructional needs in some of our alternative programs and our comprehensive services sites, our public day programs. It's not that they wouldn't support other programs and our comprehensive schools as well, but and this intensive support team is really the extended time that they can go into a building. So we did pilot this, and I don't have hard data on this, just anecdotal data. And when we piloted this, we really found they had, teachers had shoulder-to-shoulder, job embedded support every day for an extended period of time. We really did see how much that model could make a difference. So for example, the intensive support team would go in for anywhere from two to six weeks and then fade their support. And that's not necessarily the model of the Office of School Support. So Mr. Greenfelter could speak a little bit more to that. So just a more intensive support over an extended period of time that would be focused mostly on behavioral support with some instructional support as needed within those settings.
All right, so, so just to be clear, the intensive team is really focused on the, on the students with real intense behavioral needs, mostly within like the CSS and like the Burke School sites that have significant behavioral needs. And then the other team is focused on those tier two, tier three and building, building capacity and principal capacity, which will probably help all students, including helping parents through the IAP process if we have principal and building capacity with a better and stronger understanding of special ed. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Exactly how you summarized it right there is how they're differentiated.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Seismarheiser. Do you want to go back?
Yes, please.
Okay. Ms. McLaughlin, you said you wanted to speak after your colleagues, so I have Ms. Keys Gamora and Ms. Darrenak Kofax who have raised their hands. Do you want to go before them or do you want to speak now?
No, no, I want to follow behind.
Thank you. Ms. Keys Gamora.
Okay. Thank you. I want to start by saying I've had a number of conversations with folks in the community, as I'm sure a number of my colleagues have. And as a result of that, I really want to first start off with what the principles are that are guiding the things that I'm supporting and arguing for and, and just some of the things that I think absolutely have to happen. And the first priority, of course, is to deal with inequities within the distance learning. I know we all agree on that. To prioritize investments that directly impact student supports and not top-heavy administrative changes that our rank and file understand that we are not asking them to bear the cost of COVID and what it has done to our budget. And to make sure we're looking at increased investments for emotional and wellbeing supports that it also could have impacted their behavior for all students. And finally, to really look at this AAP study, which I know we haven't had an opportunity to talk about, but to look at how long-term gaps are widening even more so now. So having said that, I want to focus on some of the comments that have been made today. I think we started out with an explanation as to why special ed resource teachers were necessary and certainly support this community and know that, that especially after COVID, we're going to need even more support. My concern is, and this was on page nine, my concern is how does this take into account the anticipated needs that we know children across the board are going to have? We've got children with language problems that haven't been accessing through, due to the virtual learning and additional barriers. We've got a number of kids who may be coming in with other behavior problems that people may not be prepared for. Going forward to page 14, it looks like there's nothing listed there for interventions, no funding for interventions, which goes into my comments with respect to what we talked about on page nine. And then with respect to the tech, I just want to add to Ms. Bukarski's comment with respect to some people having laptops and others not. I've actually received some letters from parents who would like to give the FCPS laptop back and are perfectly to help with savings and know that other kids need it more than their kids are. So I would love to look at that as a possible savings and to look at, you know, whether those apps and programs can be put on, you know, these other computers, and I hope that that would be part of our.
Thank you, Ms. Keys Gamora.
Did I ring?
You rang.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. But I'll take a go back.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Corbin Sanders, Ms. Corbin Sanders as Budget Chair, I would like to have Ms. Keys Gamora's question answered.
That's what I was about to do, Ms. McLaughlin. I was about to ask for Dr. Braybrand and then Dr. Braybrand followed by Ms. Johnson on that.
So Ms. Keys Gamora, I think you're talking about on page 14, it's still TBD. We haven't finished and fleshed out the intervention support staffing, and I completely agree we need to do that. We're going to have lots of kids with lots of needs. We have special education kids, English language learners, kids with social emotional supports. You can see for the COVID reserve on slide 14, we have identified additional supports, even from what I put in my strategic investments for counselors, psychologists, and social workers. It is true, we have not, again, you heard Ms. Johnson say, most of these will go to schools. I don't have the final plan done yet, but we are aware of the need to be thinking about how we're going to scale up supports for all the kids that are going to come back with the needs that you represented. So we'll have more on the TBD very, very soon. And again, in our, in our COVID reserve, we are going to be sharing with the board, again, our plan around these additional 20 psychologists and counselors and 10 additional social workers, which would really make a 202020 plan, 20 psychologists, 20 social workers, and 20 counselors to fan out through the system and help kids. And we can look at the technology issue of savings that you mentioned as well.
So Ms. Johnson, do you have anything to add to that?
I just, I'm not sure I heard a question, but I do want to respond because I've appreciated Ms. Keys Gamora, your support in the past of social emotional curriculum. And you can see on slide 14 that there, there are funds that are being recommended to help support and develop our social emotional curriculum and develop social emotional learning, embedding it into our curriculum. So much of that fund, those funds would be going towards long-term, really planning out how we're supporting and developing those standards and embedding them in our curriculum across K through 12. And I do thank you for your past support for that.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Clarify because I'm not sure they understood my question.
Ms. Keys Gamora, can I put you on a go back?
I, I hate to lose the moment because she tried to answer it one way, but that wasn't the case.
Try to be very succinct in 10 seconds, please.
My concern is that the behaviors in terms of interventions are going to be needed across the board. And I understand special education students need them, but in light of the crisis, I think that we may need to look at it more broadly.
Thank you, Ms. Keys Gamora. Dr. Braybrand, do you want to address that?
You know, I'll take my first, I'll take a quick response and Teresa add in. We have the behavioral intervention teachers, the bits. We did add some last year. Honestly, I think it's going to be a full court press with the bits, with the substance abuse prevention specialists, with the counselors, social workers, and psychologists. And we're going to have to triage in the fall, who's.
A glass of water, I'm dying.
Ms. Darrenak Kofax, please mute.
Oh, sorry.
Please hydrate.
I must hydrate.
Oh, Ms. Keys Gamora, I think we'd have to triage tiers one, two, and three, and it's a group of folks. If you're saying whether you think we should have more bits in this mix, you know, we can go back and take a look at it, but I would let Teresa weigh in on that.
Yes, I do want to add that there, there is $100,000 built into Dr. Braybrand's initial proposed budget for behavior intervention services, and that's in addition to 300 that was already added last year. And that, that, those monies would be directly supporting de-escalation in crisis management across the district and, and supporting our efforts and building our crisis management teams in addition to looking at bringing trained experts in. And, you know, Dr. Ross Green was one that we've mentioned that we wanted to bring in and has been pushed back because of COVID. So that's a more broad look at, at supports for behavior across the district.
One, one quick follow-up, and I think Ms. Keys Gamora has a great point that this is going to be broad and affect all kids. And I do want to say that these positions, much like the current positions we have now, they would be building the capacity of principals, administrative teams, and really all teachers in the building around those strategies and structures, especially in tier two and tier three supports. So I do think there would be substantial spillover into supporting the other students, but you are 100% correct that we do need to make sure that we're, you know, building the capacity so that we can help all kids. And I do think that this would help do that.
Thank you, Mr. Greenfelter. I'm going to go on to Ms. Darrenak Kofax.
Cheers, my friend. Thank you. I'm sorry, I needed my water desperately. Something in my throat, the glitches of this. All right, I am pleased to follow my colleague, Ms. Keys Gamora, because my, my comments were much the same. I wanted a little bit of fleshing out on slide 14 about, so I understand it's the social emotional curriculum, but what the intervention and support staff funding would be. I am too concerned about every child. You know, I spoke to one of our teachers' organizations yesterday, one there where, you know, barely any children qualify for FRM and one where almost the entire school population qualifies for FRM. And the concerns, the social and emotional needs of the children were the same across the board. So I think that's very important. I think we all hear that and we all know that, and we're going to need a plan for that. I, while I'm realizing that this is not a one-to-one device initiative such as our FCPS ON, I understand right now, my first question is my concern about Title I. We changed the floor on what Title I was last year, and I'd like a clarification because my memory doesn't always serve me properly. We went from what percentage of school to what percentage is now Title I. I would like that answered by staff. And then I also think we currently have charts by region. I believe I was told by our regional team that Dr. Ivy and her staff are currently having charts by region about distribution of MiFi's as well as computers. And I would like to get that information for all of our regions. I'm asking for mine, of course, in particular, to see what the distribution was. And my concern is the change in the Title I status and where this is going to leave some of my children that are still in a very vulnerable place.
Dr. Duran, do you want to share a little bit about that on Title I, please?
Well, I don't have the exact number in terms of the percent of schools that changed. What changed was the percent where schools received Title I dollars from 45% Title I to 55%. That was your question. I'm not sure your question was the number of schools. I'm not sure if your question was the number of schools. I'd have to get that for you, though.
No, it was that, Dr. Duran, 45 to 55, yes. Okay, thank you. And I do, I would like that number as well. I know you don't have that, I, I know. And some of them we grandfathered in, and now are they going to be grandfathered in with this distribution of computers? I think that's really important to know. And Dr. Braybrand, these charts by region, do we get around?
Yeah, Dr. Ivy's going to speak to that.
Okay.
We have our lists of distributions across all of our schools, and we certainly can find where the regions and IT can formalize the, the exact number of computers for every grade level per region as well as the MiFi distribution. So we will do that.
All right, thank you. And, and I do thank the team for, you know, getting this together, this estimate and what, what we're going to do. I appreciate that at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Darnak-Kofax. Ms. Omeish?
Thank you. I had a quick question about some of the special ed support. I know we're looking at funding supports, but we're also funding the study that the goal of which is to identify where needs are, especially given that some of this has legal implications. So just wanted to ask about that.
Ms. Johnson, can you answer that?
Certainly, there could be placeholder put into the budget, but to Ms. Omeish's point, it is possible after the special education review that there are other recommendations that will come out of that.
My, Ms. Omeish, what I would say is, and I think Mr. Greenfelter mentioned it a bit earlier, if the audit moves us in a different direction, then we're going to need to, I'm going to need to bring to the board reallocated resources, reallocated positions to meet the audit needs. And I, I'm committed to doing that if the audit moves in a different direction that's inconsistent with what we're putting out here. I'm hopeful that the audit will reaffirm that we're headed in the right direction with what we're doing, but if not, I think we could pivot and redesign as needed.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just being mindful of the fact that we're in a really tight budget situation, obviously, but, and we want to base things on data, so it might be, it might be smart to do that. But the, the other, the other thing I had questions about was, you know, whether we could actually consider putting some of these in the year-end conversation. I'm looking in particular, you know, at the AAP placeholder, right, which we don't even necessarily have determinations for how to use that. So we could place that perhaps more urgently. I mean, I had questions about the thinking there or, or other pieces like the, the compliance specialist that could be put, again, I mean, better after having information from the study, but also potentially discussed in the year-end conversation, given that we anticipate some level of savings.
So we, we have been working with the chair and vice chair, and I believe we're going to have the AAP study on Monday, so you'll get to hear the AAP results before you take a final vote on the budget. So that may help you a little bit on that. And of course, the board always can choose whether they want to keep the strategic investments I listed, or make an amendment, or, or defer it to year-end or another time. We still think, you know, what I would say to you is a bottom line on the OSS supports for special education. We've had one for each region, and they're in big demand. And, you know, it's still, it's probably still more, not enough that we need, but getting another person in there and then two for high school, I think, is going to really be helpful. The nugget for me and for you all as a board and community, 40% of our special ed teachers are under a provisional license. They need more coaching than just in the classroom, good luck. And so that's what this role is doing, and I think the special ed audit is going to say, that's one of your issues. Do your folks have the training they need and then the monitoring of whether they're doing best practices in the classroom? And OSS folks can make sure that monitoring is happening, I think, better than almost anything else, working with the administrators, but the administrators can't be in that class, like Ms. Johnson said, to sit there and watch the teacher, to model the teaching. Yes, this is the way to do it. And so I think that's the advantage of going forward with what we've put, put before you guys today. But certainly understand your points.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I mean, you know, I, I, I certainly would want us to consider, just looking at the budget. I mean, in a tight situation with some uncertainty on the data and an opportunity to evaluate in year-end, we have about, if I'm not mistaken, five items that are largely specific to the special ed community. Don't get me wrong, very important services, but nothing for other populations, right? English language learners who are also having a situation of need and compensatory services. So, I mean, I say that to actually kind of lay the groundwork here for two major oversights that I saw that I hope to propose amendments for. And we can discuss these further, you know, later in a go back, but specifically addressing ESOL and then the, the school-based support that we've been talking about, you know, with the counselors, psychologists, and parent liaisons. And I, and, and the last thing I want to point out is, I, you know, I was looking at the savings piece, right? So this has been discussed by a number of my colleagues preliminarily, after doing some research, talking to some of our staff, and looking at the presentation you guys offered us, I didn't necessarily see a translation of that, of that graph, or that, yeah, the, the chart you guys had for us into where savings could be made or where some of those funds could be used. I came up with about 1.5 million in just looking, you know, initially at where I think we could pull things together and having spoken with leadership team members to, to make sure that that's somewhat reasonable. I'm happy to kind of delineate it. I've shared it with my colleagues, but I, I, I see there to be potential room there. Yeah, I'll, I'll leave it at that until I discuss my amendments later.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Braybrand, do you want to respond to that?
I, I haven't seen the proposal that you're, you're sharing. We'll be glad to look at it. I, 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 that's what I would say, we'd be glad to look at it. And this is the work session for the next budget meeting that you'll have to approve the budget. So we brought you the best thinking. I've made some changes even in the last week. And I, I would say, I would just say one other thing here to the board. We're, everyone knows, everyone is working around the clock. We're planning the best we can. Part of this is just understanding that until those kids are back on the ground with us in the school, we're going to even have to pivot then, even with what our plans are for what we've offered for the distribution of these positions. So it's just our best thinking at this point in time, and I do think we can work with you. Obviously, we hire folks for the year, but to be flexible in how we redeploy folks each year in our budget to address the needs of kids. And, and that's what we're committed to doing for this fall and in the future.
Great, thank you, Dr. Braybrand. I'm going to take my turn, and then I will share it with the rest of, then I will hand it over to Ms. McLaughlin. First, I appreciate that we have now increased fivefold the initial investment in technology. I, so that it was 2 million last week, and it's now up to 5 million. I would like to see, or 10 million, and I think that we need a more robust technology plan than that, but I believe, I understand it's a work in progress. As part of that, I see that we're still keeping 300,000 for the online courses, for the online campus. I think that we do need to have a bit more investment in online campus, especially as we go towards distance learning, because that will reach the full spectrum of our learners. And so I would just encourage that we look at that a bit more, Dr. Braybrand. And I would also like to see a bit more investment in our digital citizenship curriculum because certainly we've seen the, the need for that over the past month or two. Now I'd like to shift a little bit to another item, which is the PPE. I'm a little concerned. I don't know what our actual plan is for PPE, so if somebody could come back and provide us more details on that, I'd really appreciate it. And then finally, I want to talk a little bit about the Office of OSS, because I don't think all of our colleagues are fully aware of the work that this organization has done over the past four years, which works with, as collaborative teams to ensure instructional programs are implemented with fidelity. And they provide multiple tiers of systems of support and protocols to address the unique needs of students in, in those schools that have the highest needs. They provide those in-person, in-classroom supports to our teachers and to our principals based on, it's a data-driven approach to where they deploy their teams. And they work collaboratively to develop lesson plans for those classrooms so that they can bridge the achievement gaps. On October 24th, this past school board celebrated 35 schools that had shown how they were bridging the achievement gap. They were exceeding not only the state standards of bridging the achievement gap, but also nationally. And so when I look at the importance of that collaborative approach, I really do urge people to take a deeper dive in watching what this group has done. When I came on the board, there were 40 schools that were not fully accredited, or they were accredited with conditions. We are down to one school accredited with conditions for academic reasons. And so I just encourage people to take that deeper dive there. Similarly, when I look at the executive principal positions for region two and three, it is an equity piece that they are required or that those areas have much higher needs and have a disproportionately lower staffing level depending when you look at the number of students and their needs. So with that, Ms. McLaughlin. Actually, before I go to Ms. McLaughlin, Dr. Braybrand, could you please address the PPE, the technology, and your, if you want to address anything on the OSS?
Well, certainly on the OSS, again, it is a four-to-five-year track record of success unmatched, frankly, I think, in any school district. We presented at the state and national conferences, and people line up to take this model back. So I, I believe it speaks for itself. It's in my budget. It has remained in my budget. I did listen to board members. I removed additional dollars, and I believe in it. And I believe if you want the system to close gaps, that we need to continue to build out and give that department more responsibility and more authority to close gaps for kids. We'll take a look at online campus. I don't know if Dr. Presidio is on, but I certainly can share that feedback with him. I can certainly share that feedback with him. And on digital citizenship, actually, Dr. Presidio, you're here. Do you want to say anything about online or digital citizenship? Perhaps he's not here.
Hold on, let me see, hold on, let me see if he's still here. No, unfortunately, he is not.
Yeah, we'll, we'll go back and look at online campus. I mean, I think right now we're still in the plans to try to figure out that point made on Monday, how many families are just going to say, hey, we don't want to come back at all, and we want a fully online experience. So we'll keep looking at that. I know we've done a lot with digital citizenship to build it out, and we're definitely going to have to make it front and center moving forward. And again, it's in planning stages, but Mr. Smith, if you could just share some of the assumptions we're using right now? I know we're still waiting for final state guidance of, of what the phasing will look like for school districts and their recommendations for PPE, but what are some of the assumptions I think you're looking at in the money that we've already put in here for the 5.6 million?
Yeah, and we can certainly bring back a plan. We were just having some discussions about PPE today. Looking at our, what would we be providing for staff with regard to PPE? The recommendations from the Health Department are currently that we would not need to use surgical or medical-grade masks for students or staff as it relates to PPE, and that cloth would be the best approach. So we're currently looking at the, the pricing for cloth masks for students and staff, trying to get the best prices, of course, for that, and looking at some of the supply chains to ensure that we could get the numbers that we would need. So again, we, we will be able to pull that plan together and share it with the board. We're, we're pulling that together in terms of what it looks like for protective screens and the Plexiglas shields for those who would be facing the public, gloves for those individuals who would be working very closely with our students who may be more fragile. So again, we're looking at PPE across the board, and we'll certainly have more to share with the board in June as we talk about return to school.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. My only concern is that we have a minimalist budget for both the distance learning with the online campus as well as with the PPE. And I would like us to be able to shift money into both of those areas if we have to. So Ms. McLaughlin?
Ms. Corbett Sanders, I believe Deputy Superintendent Dr. Ivy was going to say something first.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Thank you, Dr. Ivy.
Thank you both. I just wanted to add, the Office's full support, I just really wanted to stress how closely they also, that whole support team is aligned with region office. And so they meet weekly with the region office staff, and they discuss needs, they analyze the data, and then determine how to deploy. And this model really has helped to provide intentional and targeted supports where they are needed. And we do know that we're going to have many, many needs across our system with all of our students. And by restructuring it in the way that we are recommending and adding the additional special education staff, we do feel that we will be able to better serve our communities and our students.
Thank you, Dr. Ivy. Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, I'd like to take my turn as a board member, and then I would like to lay out some procedural comments after that, Ms. Corbett Sanders, as we proceed to the next section.
Yes, but Ms. McLaughlin, go ahead with your three minutes, and then what I'm going to give you is a time check. With your three minutes, we'll be close to the original 90 minutes set for this period of our conversation. But I do have a number of people that want go-backs, so if you want to, after you speak, we can ask how we want to handle those go-backs.
Exactly, thank you. So to begin with, the purpose of today's work session was first to focus on the nine areas within the 17 items that the superintendent was proposing for new funding where there was not board consensus. So, Dr. Braybrand, my first question is the issue of dropout prevention services. You are proposing 13 new positions and 1.5 million dollars. I read the appendix. It doesn't provide, in my mind, enough information, and right now, from our board survey, there's a split for support there. So can you please have staff speak more specifically about these 13 positions?
Yes, I can. And, and Ms. Burden, I believe, did you send out the answers to some of the board member questions this morning? And I think the first one was around the issue of dropout prevention.
Yes, that's correct. That's the, that was sent out around 11:30 this morning.
Yeah, I, I know it was late in the morning, and my apologies. You know, Mark, do you want to start a little bit with that? I know you, you had a role in shaping that answer. Do you want to start?
Sure, I can start, and then if Sloan comes back on, he would, his office has a large role in this as well, and I know Teresa supports this. Basically, when dropout rate started becoming part of the accreditation process. Basically, when dropout rate started becoming part of the accreditation process, and we knew we had some issues within Fairfax County in our dropout rate, we really tried to find out how could we provide the best support to schools to help eliminate dropout rate. And, you know, we certainly want to close it, but our goal, obviously, is to eliminate it. So what we did was we have two resource teachers in the Office of School Support that focus on dropout rate. They are previous dropout rate experts working into our most at-risk schools. And they have spent their time this year in a new role, really trying to go and coach different schools up and their staff, working around dropout rate at the individual schools. The work is really daunting because it's extremely hands-on, where they're reaching out to individual students. It's extremely time-consuming. And there's a lot of strategies that go along with it that are built up over years of expertise at a particular school and community. What we have found and what the principals really voiced the concern was having a full-time person in schools with high dropout rates to really build that relationship over time, build out the bridge to the community, being able to work with individuals over a period of time so they can get them back into school. And that really takes a strong relationship and somebody that can do that over a period of years, to be quite honest, as they're building that relationship, getting to know some of these kids when they're eighth grade, transitioning into ninth, following them through the course of school to try to make sure that they stay in school. So really, that's what those positions are to focus on. They're not based out of OSS in any way. They're school-based positions that would be at the school level. And so they would work in collaboration with our staff, who's done this for a few years now, to help coach them up and get them to a point where they can start providing assistance in their own schools and helping those kids come back to school. So that's really where OSS comes in. And I know that both IS, Instructional Services, Jen Glazer's team and Teresa Johnson's team have components of that. So our structure is to bring those folks together on a regular basis, build up professional development, and then monitor what they're doing in their schools in terms of trying to reduce the overall dropout rate. That's just a pretty general overview. I'm sorry if that was not specific enough. I can try to give some more details, or again, maybe Sloan or Teresa can add in.
Mr. Greenfelder, that's okay. I'm being mindful of time. I see the responses. Dr. Brabran and Ms. Burden, I so appreciate the detailed responses. I do want to note, they were not posted to Board Docs. The public and the board really do need to have information all collectively in one spot, so I'd like to make sure those get posted as soon as possible, those responses to board members. It does also make it difficult as we're sitting in a meeting, trying to review what looks like is a 13-page document from Ms. Burden. So that does make it difficult for us to analyze and engage in today's work. So I will say to my colleagues, I have concerns about that Item One. I think 13 new positions. Reading the response while Mr. Greenfelder was talking, I don't know that I've got enough information today to support that for next week. And then the other thing I want to just bring to everybody's attention is that there seems to be a line item for the Behavior Intervention Technicians, line item for $100,000, but it's not any new FTE. And again, I can't, I can't see here why is that different from the other line item for three new services in this area? So can someone speak to what that non-FTE line item is for $100,000?
Yes, that should read Behavior Intervention Services, and that is money specifically to fund the training for crisis management, isolation programs, for example, our MAMP programs and our professional crisis management, and developing that training within school teams. In addition, that would support bringing in some of the nationally-recognized experts that we'd like to bring in to support behavior across all schools.
Okay. So then, I guess the other thing is, I noticed in our survey results, school board members had, were unsure about funding the substance abuse prevention counselors. So I just want to place that on everybody's list for, in go-backs, being able to maybe speak to where we are on that. I do want to say briefly, Dr. Brabran, I appreciate that you are going to look for cost savings in your structural reorganization with respect to OSS. And I think that's something the board will be able to talk to at a later date, and that's where it falls appropriately.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Do you want to talk about those items, Dr. Brabran?
To be honest, Ms. McLaughlin, at one point, I couldn't quite hear. She was trying to make a distinction on the Behavior Intervention Services, and I think Teresa answered. What was the question before that? And I missed it because I misheard her speaking.
Your last item, Ms. McLaughlin?
Oh, I believe, it's all right. Dr. Brabran, Ms. Johnson answered that question about the Behavior Intervention Services. And then I was just noting that there was questions from board members about the substance abuse prevention specialists. So it's all good for now.
Yeah, and you know, one thing just for the board, and I'm just being real, like I always am, is these were questions the board got informally, and we didn't do a grammar check of some of the questions. And, but we'll work with the Budget Chair and Vice Chair going forward. We want to, what we're really trying to do is get you as much information back as quickly as possible on short timelines in the middle of just this difficult crisis. But we'll work with you and the Vice Chair so that the board certainly has all this information available on Board Docs to review before you vote next Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brabran. So Ms. McLaughlin and the rest of the board, we had scheduled until 3:35 for questions and comments. That gives us nine additional minutes before that time goes up. But I do have go-backs from one, two, three, four, six board members so far. If we could get a check of the board of where we want to go from here?
Ms. Corbett Sanders, in the interest of time, what I would suggest is that we limit the go-back comments first. Secondly, the next section we're going into is to take a pulse of the board on the nine items that the superintendent has proposed new spending, but where we do not have board consensus yet on those items. And it will be at that point that I would really encourage board members. We've been sidetracked a little too much today about the new COVID spending proposals, and we haven't stayed focused on those nine areas that the superintendent wants to spend more, new monies with new full-time positions. And we need to know where the board is on them.
Okay, so Ms. McLaughlin, with six go-backs, I'm going to, and to keep within the timeframe, I'm going to give each board member one minute for their go-back. And I will ask for answers from staff to be very succinct.
Great.
Okay. And so with that, for go-backs, I have Dr. Anderson first.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Ms. McLaughlin, for refocusing us. So I will keep to that vein and speak to those nine area, nine items. I really want to be sure that I reiterate my support for the executive principals and the dropout prevention, because those are going to be positions that will continue to support the areas of the greatest needs in our county. And I also believe that the pandemic has only exacerbated the issues that are taking place in, with the populations that will be served by those two expenditures. Just very quickly, for the executive principals for Regions Two and Three, both of those regions have over 40% free and reduced, 29% and 25% respectively, of students whose English is their second language and require additional support. A significant number of new principals will be heading those schools. Those supports are necessary. And then they're the largest, with 45 schools apiece. And so.
I'll give you 10 more seconds, and I'll give everybody 10. Go for it.
Okay, so I want to put my support there, also with the dropout. What I will not support is the OSS restructuring. I know we found the savings, but I'd like to find those savings to do some of the other things that we have been talking about all along regarding gaps and health support and social-emotional. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Ms. Corbett Sanders, I want to clarify what's going to happen in the next section so it won't cause what happened to Dr. Anderson. The next 45 minutes will be when we take that temperature check so people can talk about what they can support and won't support in those 45 minutes. This would be better for people to just get their final questions related to those nine items.
Super. Thank you. Having said that, Dr. Anderson, do you have any questions you did not get answered?
Yes, I do. One of the things that I wanted to ask about is the OSS Special Education Resource Teachers. Have there been consideration in order to broaden the number of students that can be serviced by that group for a retitling? Because I think right now that the conversation that I've heard is that since it's called a Special Education Resource Teacher, there seems to be a focus that it's only going to support those students. But I also heard from Ms. Johnson that there's support for the principals, there's support for the teachers, including special education teachers. So I'm just wondering if there's room to have a broader delineation in terms of that position title, so it's not so specific. The other question that I had goes back to the Espits. I just wanted to be sure that my concern is not whether or not those positions are needed, because we all, it's been clear that they are. I am just concerned that we have some schools that have 380 students and some schools with 1,100 students. Is that an equitable expectation? So I would like for somebody to think about that. And I think that's all that I have. Thank you.
Okay, and with that, I have Ms. Cohen.
Mine are not about the nine, but they definitely, my, for me to be able to vote for the budget, I would like some answers. The first is just a comment on the PPE. I definitely hope we'll be using Health Department guidelines. I have some serious concerns about returning teachers back to classrooms without N95 masks. My second is, I think it would be really helpful for the general public, for Dr. Brabran or Ms. Burden, to address why we are unable, unfortunately, to give a market scale increase and a step increase at this time. I think it's very difficult to understand how we can make any new expenditures when, you know, teachers feel very left behind. And I recognize it's a budgetary piece. So I think maybe a good explanation for them would be very helpful.
Well, let me, let me take the quickest, again, to be succinct. We had an $85 million request from the county. It went to $7 million. That took all of the step and MSA. We had the state new spending cut. And what we have left is working to maintain existing staffing and trying to do what we have here, prop up some additional programs and supports for kids. We are hopeful, though, that the quarter-by-quarter approach that the county is looking at may help us if things begin to improve and we could address salary and compensation later in the school year.
Thanks, that's very helpful.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Ms. Pikarski?
Thank you. Ms. Corbett Sanders, you actually touched upon one of my biggest concerns with this budget, and that's regarding the online campus. And I'm not sure if we have allocated enough funds for this, but I do believe we may have many students who would be interested. So just relooking at that, I would appreciate that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pikarski. Ms. Seizmar Heiser?
Ms. Corbett Sanders, I just wanted to let you and the board know that Dr. Presidio is listening today, but he's having his microphone, and he can respond after the meeting to the question about online campus.
That would be very helpful. Thank you, Ms., Dr. Ivy.
Okay, so I wanted to first, piggyback on what Ms. Pikarski said. I think we do need to take a look at if we get additional funding from the state around our technology and our digital citizenship and making sure our students are having those skills in case we need to go back to that. But I wanted to sort of address the statement one of my colleagues made about that we're spending lots of new positions for special ed and nothing for anyone else. If you do the math, we have added substance abuse counselors, counselors, social workers, and we add all of those up, and dropout prevention specialists are on the strategic initiatives as to $8.5 million. That's not including potentially using principal parity pay as well as additional funding in the TBD. We have with the seven positions, the three, seven and the three intensive, $1.2 million. So that's an eighth of the spending that we're doing for student support on special ed. And those positions are also going to be there to support all Tier One and Tier Two and Tier Three, build building capacity, support building teachers. So I do want to say that it isn't, it's proportionate, considering we have 14% of our students just with IEPs and additional with 504s. And special ed with 40% special ed teachers, and admins, parents, and principals all have been telling me that this is a real need. So I just wanted to put that out there. But it's, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seizmar Heiser. Ms. Keys-Gamar?
Yes, I'll just try to wrap up really quickly where I couldn't, was cut off before. With respect to the comments about special ed resource teachers, I do agree with Ms. Anderson. In light of the review coming up, I think Mr. Fritz said something about this as well. I am concerned about overall support, given behaviors that we can't anticipate at this time for everyone. So I think that support is needed. With respect to OSS, you know, I'm a little, I guess, disturbed by the promise to find $25,000 to support going to a new department, when I have received a number of letters from people in the community thinking that these things should be coordinated even under Instructional Services or, and we're already going to have to look at organization in light of people leaving. So I think that discussion is a little bit premature at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamar. Mr. Fresh?
I'm sorry, I had my hand up in air. Actually, my hand's up.
Oh, you had said you wanted to go back when you spoke before, but that's okay.
Oh.
Ms. McLaughlin, you get the last word.
Yes, I just, I want to say that I do appreciate that we are looking at a budget, and it's $3.2 billion. I would prefer that the board, in this next phase, stay focused on the new spending items that the superintendent has on the table. The Office of School Supports is no longer a budget item at this time. We do know with the change in the leadership team that has been presented with Dr. Doran's new hire to Arlington Public Schools, that the board will engage in those conversations with how the superintendent wants to best restructure his leadership team. And I would prefer that being focused, that conversation continue at that time. It's no longer a budget item for us to be concerned about.
Thank you.
That's an interpretation of my comments, by the way.
Excuse me. We are now at 3:38. We're three minutes behind. This next piece is the consensus piece of the agenda. Can I suggest that we put up the graph that you sent around that shows what items you need your consensus? You want consensus on, Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, please. I know Ms. Mulberg may have to pull that from the email.
I'm pulling it up right now. I have it ready. It's loading.
Yeah, I do want to point out that, regrettably, Dr. Brabran... Yeah, I, I do want to point out that regrettably, Dr. Braybrand, your slide 14 that we've been speaking to does not match a number for number. So that has made it a little difficult. But I don't know of any other way than just work from our document here.
Yeah, if I could real quick for this document, slide 14, remember, was us looking at the COVID reserve and at the CARES Act for funding. This is about my original strategic investments in the budget. And I just want to say before you all begin this discussion, just for clarity, that I have withdrawn item three and I have withdrawn item 12. I will not be bringing those for your review and approval on the next Thursday. So items three and 12, I have withdrawn and hopefully that's helpful context as you go through this chart Ms. McLaughlin has for you now. Thank you.
Thank you. The key board members, as you'll note, is looking at those areas shaded in blue and the far right column where it says focus areas. These are the ones we need to, what I would ask at this section of time is people can speak to where they are on these nine items so that then when we take the straw poll, people will have been able to speak to where their concerns or their support may.
Right. Ms. McLaughlin, we have 45 minutes associated with this piece. That would give each board member about three minutes to speak to it. So with that, if I could have a show of hands of who wants to speak? Ms. Marin?
Yeah, just getting on here. Thank you. So I'm really pleased that we've been able to winnow this down quite a bit and thank you, Dr. McCarthy and Ms. McLaughlin. I, I think that, you know, when I look line by line, I mean dropout prevention, that's something that serves all students, so I support that. Online campus, I certainly do support that and support other dovetailed investments. Special education support, I do support that. Technology infrastructure, I support that. The AAP placeholder, I'm more of a maybe or leaning towards no on that at this point, given the other priorities. And we have yet to read the report or discuss the report we've received. I do believe the next item, the restraint and seclusion compliance specialists, I do believe it's important that we fund this, given what has come to light recently and despite the fact that students might not be in school in the months ahead to some, you know, to some extent, I think it's important to be sure that the release of paperwork is starting to be corrected and how we, having a corrected approach rather, and how we comply with what's needed. Substance abuse specialists, again, I think that's critical right now. The executive principals in regions two and three, you know, I've been a bit conflicted as I hear from some members of the public saying not to fund central office. And, you know, I see it as people in central office, you know, are working extremely hard as well. And these two executive principal positions seem to be really needed in those two regions because of the workload that's there. And so I am inclined to support that and I do support special ed resource teachers. So I'm supportive of pretty much all of them except for AAP placeholder at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. Mr. Fresh?
Thank you. So just going down the list, supportive of dropout prevention and online campus, supportive of special education intensive support and technology infrastructure. Though I do think we probably need more money there, which I think Chairman Corbett Sanders has already addressed. In terms of the AAP placeholder, again, I'm, you know, I think it's important that we do have the funding for this, but we don't know what direction we're going in yet. So I think that money could be put to use immediately in direct support of our students. On the social emotional restraint and seclusion, you know, this is obviously a very important issue. And, you know, I've heard from many parents that they, that they wonder how this is the solution to this problem. But, you know, I'm open minded about it, you know. Is this the solution? Would we have not had the issues that we had as a school division if this position existed? The only one here that I am inclined to oppose is the executive principals for regions two and three because I think that money could be used elsewhere. All of these things are priorities that should be implemented, but we just don't have the funding to do it all right now.
Thank you, Mr. Fresh. Ms. Seismarhyzer?
Okay, so I'll go through the same list again. Dropout prevention, I think, is important right now, especially with the disengagement of students. Online campus, again, I think we may need to look at expanding this. Special education intensive support, considering that it's in the buildings for some of the most needy students, I definitely support that. Technology infrastructure, again, I think we need to expand that. I'm going to go back to some of my colleagues, the AAP placeholder, I am very much in favor of looking at our AAP program access and programming. But I don't know if this is right now where we need to have a placeholder as opposed to, again, using direct support for our classrooms. I'm still a maybe on that one. The compliance specialist, I think we need some focus on restraint and seclusion. I'm not sure a compliance specialist is the best way to go about that as opposed to a support, behavioral support specialist that also may do some of the compliance piece. So I'm concerned about the way that position is. Substance abuse prevention specialists, I think we definitely need those. The region executive principals, I know those are regions that are needed. I just, I'm not sure that's, again, the best way versus direct building support. I'd like to maybe see that used for the technology infrastructure. Special education resource teachers, again, because those are described as boots on the ground, helping our 40% and other teachers and are building our principal capacity in the schools themselves. I think that's very important for some of those most needy populations and helping the schools understand behaviors. Same, opposite school support expansion, there's no budgetary impact on that. So I think, you know, the work that they do has been good and I support the expansion or the retitling, I guess. Special education review, so I went past the blues. I'll stop there. But I just wanted to say really quickly, I understand the need to wait for the audit, but that's going to take two years. We already have a special education department that many parents and teachers are describing to me in crisis. And we have not added school board funding to tier two and tier three through DSS for over 10 years. So I don't know necessarily whether waiting longer with that makes the most sense when we can redeploy positions as needed based on the results of the audit. So that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Ms. Tolan?
Yes, hi. Following my colleagues, I don't know if I need to go down through the entire list. I have very similar comments on a number of these. But I do want to highlight that I absolutely support the dropout prevention, FTEs and the substance abuse FTEs because those have proven to be extremely helpful in a number of our high schools and the substance abuse counselors in particular. Service everyone, every single one of our high schools can use that support. So I definitely support that. I also, similar comment on the technology infrastructure and support in online campus. I think the numbers are small, so we need to continue to look at that in light of our other slide 14 or whatever it was with COVID support and, you know, look at potentially increasing that. Given that, I look forward to our discussion on AAP equity of access on Monday. But again, not sure if we really need that $1 million in that placeholder slot right now. Perhaps we can look at reducing that. I think I'll stop there. I certainly support the need for the special education work as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Ms. Bukarski?
Thank you. As somebody else said, I was very conflicted with the principal positions as well. I have spent some time talking with colleagues and trying to understand the needs and the differences. And I do feel much more confident right now that that is money well placed for a large number of needs in those regions. So I do believe I'll be supporting that now. I also support the SED supports. And I, I would just like to remind my colleagues for consideration that many times our SED students also are ELL learners, are, you know, FRM and are, have those higher needs. So I think this is needed and I think it will be needed for next year. And as I said earlier, the online support campus, rather, I would like to see that be more robust. And at this time, I do not support the AAP placeholder. We need to have the conversation and we need to be thoughtful. And with the economic downturn, I just don't think that is a priority right now for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bukarski. Ms. Cohen?
I'll also go down the list. My concern, I'm still a maybe, to be honest, on the dropout prevention. I just, for the one and a half million, my concern is that the support is for a few high schools, which I know are in dire need. But I worry about trading the one and a half million that we could use for supports in earlier intervention. Particularly, as I've said a million times, counselors in our schools, psychologists in reducing the ratio in elementary school. I agree with the online campus. I agree with my colleagues. I'd like it to be even more robust. I support this SED intensive support piece. The tech and infrastructure supports, my only confusion is are we able to pull that from COVID money instead? AAP placeholder, I'm a no for that because I'd like to defer that to next year. And again, use it for on the ground, boots on the ground support for kids and for our teachers. I mean, yes, the substance abuse specialists, I anticipate we're going to have an even greater need when we're able to be all together again. And I will not be supporting the executive principals, though I think our executive principals are amazing. I would be supportive of a reserve pool that we could pull when different regions have different needs. But I'm not supportive at this time of adding them to regions two and three. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Ms. Darrenak Kofax?
Yes, I'm going to concentrate first on the ones where I see there's a lack of consensus and where I'm supporting and why I would like my colleagues to continue to keep listening and, and consider supporting. I am, sorry, I am looking to support the AAP placeholder. One reason in particular, and you will see when you read the report, is that the advanced academic resource teachers are crucial to having real boots on the ground and are in direct student support to identify those children who need this advanced academic curriculum in order to support. And you'll also see in the report that as a result of having academic resource teachers in schools and in those schools, there was 186% and a 322% increase in African American and Hispanic education identification in levels three, in levels four services over the last 10 years. That's extremely important. Also, another one that seems to be having some mixed reviews is the region three assistant principals, executive principals. And I want to point out, some of my colleagues have done this as well, is that region two and region three combined, we have 54% of all of the populations of the ELL learners. And we also have between those two regions, each of those regions has nearly 50% FRM as part of their. These issues, and I'll be happy to talk to colleagues one on one if you have a specific question. These issues are, compound the work for what is necessary on the ground. And we need consistency in this area and these positions are in direct support of our students. In my time remaining, I will go through, I am in support of the dropout prevention. Again, that's hitting many of the same schools that are most needy schools that need this. And I, I understand Dr. Braybrand withdrew the monies for OSS, but I am, again, in great support as Ms. Karen Corbett Sanders talked about needing, she talked about the data there behind that, that basically went, we went from 40 schools, served 40 schools that were accredited with WARDEN down to one as the intensive supports for Project Momentum. And I am more or less in, in support of the remaining items. I am concerned about the, the support for technology. Again, as many of my colleagues have noted, I put those budget questions in. Not exactly sure if there'll be enough monies to get it in all of the hands of everybody that needs it. And there you go. Done.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Darrenak Kofax. Good timing. We now have Ms. Keys-Gamar?
Okay, I'll start with OSS because I think maybe there's a little misunderstanding in terms of my position. One, I do think Project Momentum has done good work. I'm not sure why it needs to be a department. I'm also very confused or bothered by the statement that we're going to find money from elsewhere that is currently not identified and we're to make a decision based on that without knowing what we're going to lose. So I can't support that. I do support dropout prevention, online campus. Let's see. Number nine is equity. I actually have read the report. And in terms of the disparities, they are very real and very entrenched and I can only imagine them getting worse. And so at this point, I am in support. 13, I think, is what I have next. Social emotional, 14, I support. 10, I support. And 12.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamar. Ms. Omeish?
Okay, thank you. Okay, so looking at this here, I would support the strategic plan piece of the program budget and look forward to that being implemented in a way that we can rigorously look through. Division council appears to be an investment so that we minimize costs alternatively. So I do support that. The social worker piece is extremely important and I look forward to having consideration from my colleagues about additional supports that are school based. I have been, I've mentioned, I was a little, I am a little bit conflicted about the degree of supports specifically for the special ed community, though, given a tight budget time. I mean, I support all of these otherwise. So I have been wanting to broaden the scope of the resource teachers piece, but I am supportive broadly. The restraint and seclusion specialists, the AAP placeholder are pieces that I would like to see in the year end for us to discuss. And let me take a look here. The scale enhancements, I think, are very important. We are putting our staff in a really tough position otherwise. The online campus piece, obviously, is just going to be necessary. And I wanted to flag that there is room for consolidation there. That's part of where I identified potential efficiencies and savings with DJ Summer School and how that's converting online. So I'm, I will support that and I'll also support the dropout prevention. I've been able to hear in schools the importance of that and no doubt in a time like this. And the executive principles piece, I will say I'm conflicted in hearing everyone's concerns, but also shocked by the discrepancies and will also point to the materials budget. Dr. Braybrand, I think it's worth looking at, but at the discrepancies there too in the region supports. So I believe in it some more there. And certainly supporting the special ed review, which will hopefully inform us better to know how to make decisions about some of the special ed supports moving forward. I think that was everything. So.
Thank you, Ms. Omeish. So with my time, what I would like to do is just give people a brief overview of region two. a brief overview of region two and three versus other regions. So in region five, we only have 32 schools. In region three and two, each of those schools have 45. So essentially 50, almost 50% more schools with the exact same resources provided to them. The two regions that are asking and need the extra support, one, they have 13 more schools than one region, they have eight more schools than another region, and they have five more schools than the other one. And then you've heard about the difference in the needs in those regions. So when we talk about equity of resources and equity for our students, we should also talk about equity when we, we look at workload for our staff. And this is a substantially, a substantial amount more of demands if you were just looking at the number of schools, if you look at the number of students, if you look at the number of, the amount of poverty, the amount of students with needs. And so I would just urge my colleagues to really rethink about their, their concerns over the executive principles, because they are moving the, you know, they have huge workloads and I think that's enough said on that. I do think that on, I do support the dropout prevention, but I may make an amendment, I haven't decided, to move some of the dropout prevention money, because there is one school that has one and a half full-time equivalents versus all the others have one. And so we may want to move so that each one has the exact same amount of supports on dropout prevention, but I do support it. And I would take that money and put it into online campuses. Special ed intensive supports, need to understand a little bit more about that, but I do know that we have, we have this study going on, and I would like to better understand if those intensive supports are just for special ed or for others. Want to talk a little bit about, I agree with Ms. Seismar Heiser, the comments about the restraint and seclusion compliance specialist. I'm not sure that a compliance specialist is what we need there because that basically reinforces that we have come out with a decision on restraint and seclusion, and we have asked for more, more information and a deeper dive into, into special ed and to those practices. So I would prefer that we look at that as perhaps a behavioral specialist as well. And with that, and obviously you all know that I fully support the CIS scale enhancements. This is long overdue. If it were up to me, I would have ensured that the IAs were made whole this year, and unfortunately, it's going to take one more year to do that. But in addition to their salary enhancement, I will encourage that we make sure that they have the technology, the technology they need to do their job. So that's it. We have both Dr. Anderson and Ms. McLaughlin.
Dr. Anderson, you can go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify because I'm also getting some questions. Are we going to go through and do the straw poll with the hand raising with each of the nine items?
Yes, I just haven't had my chance to walk through where my support is on these nine. Did I, yours?
No, I didn't have a chance to have mine either. So I will take the, well, I'm not sure.
Now, you're okay. You can still go through them, Dr. Anderson. You kind of did a hybrid. You should go ahead and do it one last time.
Okay, I will just be a little bit more holistic and then everything else show up in my vote. I really want to stress my support in the areas that I know our greatest needs are going to only continue to be aggravated with what we've been undergoing, and that is with the dropout support, the substance prevention, and the executive principles. I could not underscore these needs anymore. Similarly, with the technology, online campus, I, I've been speaking about this for a long time. We need to have as robust an infrastructure as possible. The issues that have plagued us at this time should not continue because we should have plenty of evidence to show where our needs are. While I do understand that the restraint and seclusion compliance specialist, it's not the end to all that needs to be done in that area. It is certainly a start, and, and I will be in support of that. I will also be in support of the AAP placeholder. I do believe that there's some equity issues that we do need to be sure that we are reviewing. I, I think that the time is always now for equity. And I, and I understand the climate. I understand what my colleagues have said, but there are some things here when it comes to serving certain of our student populations that I frankly don't want to hold on, don't want to hold off on. I think we need to be sure that we have the resources to support whatever it is we uncover in that AAP study. Again, I think everything here in the nine items I have talked about, and I will be in support of. I would like to make a classic, another play to the number six, is it, the special education resource teachers, to maybe broaden the title so that it's not so specific that we are not conveying the message that this, these resource teachers will be supporting a much broader scope of students. Again, I just, I know it's not on the table for consideration, but I do want to say I am not in support of the Office of Support Reorganization. And whether it's $300,000, $25,000, those finding, those savings, I, I think we need to spend elsewhere. And I will be offering an amendment later on with some of my colleagues regarding counseling. Thank you.
So Ms. McLaughlin?
Thank you. Going down the list, I do appreciate everyone's strong support about dropout prevention. As a social worker, I absolutely understand that at its core. However, this is 13 brand-new positions. I still have questions about the job description. What will be the credentials of these people? Has there ever been a model in other school districts that use this approach? Though I can see supporting it, but I will most likely be asking our colleagues to support a follow-on motion that will require the superintendent to come back to the board with his plan of what, with more details, along with benchmarking against other school divisions. These are 13 recurring jobs at $1.5 million more per year. I think it's a big expenditure, and we would do well to have the details from the superintendent on this and make sure we're, we're spending our money the best way possible, especially in COVID. The other items listed down there, my colleagues have spoken very well to, so I can be supportive of them, going all the way down to the executive principals. In hearing from other principals, I understand that these EPs are very valuable to them. And so I do think that it's something I can get behind. The AAP placeholder, I am struggling on that one. I, I do understand in a, in a pre-COVID world, I was very supportive of that placeholder. But going into our very limited funds and our very strategic needs, I, I just don't know that we want to embargo $1 million until we actually understand what the new school year is going to look like. I, I don't know that that's absolutely imperative for this upcoming school year that starts in a few months, that we would hold on to that kind of funding. Other than that, I, I do appreciate that the concerns people have raised about the other special education positions, I would certainly welcome the superintendent briefing the board on the deployment of those based on the feedback we've been giving him today. So other than that, I really appreciate that everybody did such a great job of walking through where their supports are.
Ms. McLaughlin, can I ask a question? Many of these items are areas where there's support, but there's a concern over timing. At the state and county level, one of the things they've done is they've put in a parking lot, an area that says, kind of like a pause, that we're going to take a pause, and on a quarterly basis, we're going to relook at these items based on availability of funds. Is your intention, when you go for the consensus, to have a yes, no, and a pause?
I do think that we can give board members that third column where we had said maybe, that, that if board members aren't sure for next Thursday's budget vote, that they want to greenlight it, that they don't want to necessarily say not at all for FY21, they could go into the maybe column of pushing it to the year-end review, where we have a lot of other school board member proposals for new funding. That, I don't think there's any harm with that. I also don't think we want to take up time debating that today. But I, I don't, I don't want to box people in that it's a yes or no and no other option. Ms. Dr. Anderson, you've been my partner throughout. I would like to hear what you think about that approach before we start the vote.
Oh, I appreciate it. Thank you so much for asking for my feedback. I think at this point, it would be, I, I think, the most helpful if we could provide as much direction to the superintendent as possible. So the more clarity we can have in our support when we take the straw poll, the better I think it will be for him. While I would not want to inhibit anyone from wanting to get more information, I, I really don't want us to end up in the same place that we are right now with so many of our consensus items being in the maybe column. It's really hard, I think, for the leadership to move forward.
I think there's a misunderstanding here, Dr. Anderson. As was outlined, what we're going to be doing here, the feedback. What, what we're doing here is developing board consensus for our omnibus motion. At this point, this isn't about the superintendent anymore. He's laid out what new funding and new positions he is proposing in the budget. The board now is going to present something to the public next, for next Thursday's vote. So right now, the items on this chart where we already had school board member support of seven or more, that is rolling into the omnibus motion for next Thursday. These other remaining nine items, you and I, as budget chair and vice chair, were taking the straw poll vote to determine by board consensus of seven or more, that they will also be added into the omnibus motion for next week's vote. So the, the maybes is people saying, don't put it into the omnibus, we can defer it to the year-end discussion.
I, I hear what you're saying, and, and thank you for that. But I, I think I, I'm still wanting for us to, to be as clear as possible in terms of whether or not it will be yes or no. Again, if we are still very, I, I'd just like to challenge my colleagues to, to get there if possible. If not, I definitely understand. So when we take the straw poll, again, I'd like to be able to add those items into that motion that we'll have for next week.
So what I would suggest, then, let's just go with yes and no, and then board members can say if they would like, they can, they can propose themselves to add this to year end. Let's just do that.
Or to a quarterly review in the future. Okay, so, Ms. McLaughlin, is it your intent that we go one by one through the, and take a vote of who could generally support, and then at, at the end of that, we'll see where we're at?
I, I think that's the cleanest way to do that. Just if you, as, as chair of the board, go ahead, and we'll go through each item that has been highlighted in blue in the focus area, and you can go ahead and, and count up the votes, and we'll move to the next item.
Excellent. Okay, so I'm going to go line by line, if you're okay with that.
Anderson, can other people see the screen? Is it just me? Do I need to log out and back, back off? Can other people see the budget survey results PDF?
No, my screen is black.
Okay, so what I'm going to ask is, pull down the, pull down the budget survey results, Ms. Mulberg, and then put them back up again, and let's see if that helps people see the screen.
Magic.
Excellent. Can everybody show your hand if you can see the screen? Raise your hand, please. So I see that Ms. Marin, Dr. Anderson, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Kees Gamarra, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Bukarski, Ms. Seismar Heiser, Ms. Omesh, Ms. Darnak Kofax, Ms. Tolan, and myself can see the screen. Ms. Kees Gamarra, you have said yes, correct? Excellent. So with that, I'm going to go line by line, and we'll do, so please put your hands down, everybody. Thank you. Ms. Bukarski, can you put your hand down? Thank you. Now I'm going to go achievement dropout prevention for 1.5 million and 13 full-time equivalents. Please raise your hands. I have Dr. Anderson, Ms. Kees Gamarra, Ms. Marin, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Darnak Kofax, Ms. Bukarski, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Omesh, Ms. Seismar Heiser, Ms. Cohen, and myself, oh, and Ms. McLaughlin and myself. That looks like it's unanimous. I think that state, that becomes a green. Now we're going to go to the online campus. Please take your hands down and start again. Online campus, folks. I have Ms. Tolan, Ms. Omesh, Mr. Frisch, Dr. Anderson, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Darnak Kofax, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Marin, Ms. Seismar Heiser, Ms. Kees Gamarra, Ms. Bukarski, and Ms. Corbett Sanders. That too will be in the green. Thank you. Next, we're going to go to.
Ms. Ms. Corbett Sanders, I'm just thinking streamlining-wise, would it be easier if we just go ahead, since a lot of us spoke to supporting a lot of these items, maybe just say who cannot support it, and then we might end up saying it's one, two, or zero, and then we just move faster than naming off all 12 of us each time?
Okay, that's fine if you like. Who cannot support the special education intensive support? Now I'm going to clarify this. We need a clarification. Is it that you can't support the three full-time equivalents, or is it the titling of it as special education intensive support? So if we do, if I can get a show of hands of who can, if people can do, can support the special educate, or who, who cannot support special education intensive supports? Okay, that's not enough, so we're going to leave that one in. The technology infrastructure supports, who can support that? I mean, who cannot support technology infrastructure? Okay, we're going to keep that in. Then we have the AAP placeholder. Who cannot support the AAP placeholder?
Karen, can we have a conversation in moving that to year end, or is this, or can we get to that later?
We'll get to that later, okay? So with that, we do not have support for the AAP placeholder. I'm going to put that off to the side for a question about either year end or quarterly, okay? Now we get to the social, emotional restraint and seclusion compliance specialist. Who cannot support that? We only have one not supporting it, so that will be.
I'm sorry, this is watching again. I apologize. Can we talk about renaming that one? Because I don't support it as it's named, but I would like to support the position. Because I don't support it as it's named, but I would like to support the position. And I'm curious where my colleagues are now.
Point of clarification, yeah.
I'm going to put that off to the side for further discussion after we get through everything else, okay, folks?
Thanks, Karen.
A point of clarification, Karen, when we're voting right now, we're not, when we say we're not supporting, we're not commenting on year end and further consideration, right?
No, ma'am.
Right now?
We're going to come back to that. Those that we have off to the side because they're not supporting it, but it doesn't have supported enough support for the whole board, we're putting that off into a parking lot. So so far, we do have the AAP placeholder, and just on the restraint and seclusion, it's the question of the titling at this point that I will bring back to the board in a second, okay? Substance abuse prevention specialist, who cannot support those? That one will be included in. And the executive principals, who cannot support the executive principals? There are only two that cannot support the executive principles, so those two will be in the budget, the executive principles will be in the omnibus budget. Special education resource teachers, seven full-time.
Karen, this is one that I'd like to talk about, re-titling. I can support it with re-titling, so...
So do you, okay, so I'm going to put that off to the side for a conversation about that next, okay?
Thank you.
We've taken the Office of School Support, Dr. Braybrand's taken that off. We have the support for the special education review. We have the support for the CIS scale enhancements, and Dr. Braybrand has taken off the pay parity for principals, and all the rest we have supports for. So what I've got as items to discuss is the AAP placeholder, the restraint and seclusion, whether we call it compliance, or if it's something, or if it's additional supports for behaviors. And we have the titling of the special ed resource teachers. May I start with the AAP since it was the first one we came to? Ms. Kiesgmar.
I just had a question.
Just a minute apiece.
I'm sorry?
We're going to keep this to a minute apiece when people have questions. So you have a question regarding AAP?
No, I have a question regarding OSS, because I don't know where that 25,000 is coming from. And do we have, as a board, have an opportunity to know what that is?
Dr. Braybrand, will you provide more details on that 25,000? I think you provided something on what was sent out earlier today.
Yes, I will have more details, yes. While I have withdrawn it from this budget, I understand what Ms. Kiesgmar is asking for, and I will follow up, you know, very shortly with the board to give that information.
My concern is that when you take it off, it removes it from board discussion, and I feel a little slighted by that, but thank you.
Ms. Kiesgmar, this is Budget Chair Megan. I want to make sure, I totally appreciate where you're coming from. It's not taking it away from the board discussion, it's just appropriately not including it in our budget discussion for FY21. Dr. Braybrand has changes in his leadership team for FY20, that he's going to then have both budget cost savings and reorganization. He will need to bring all of that back to the board. It's just we're trying to focus on what is FY21 cost, and this item is no longer an FY21 cost.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. I was about to say that, so you spoke to it perfectly as the budget chair. Thank you. Ms. Darnak, Kofax?
You asked to speak to the AAP?
Yes.
So, and you only gave a minute, so I will be succinct. I have advocated with the chair to ensure that the progress made, but the challenges that remain for our advanced academic programming be on the agenda before Thursday, before the budget vote. So those of you who are on the fence, I encourage you to read that this weekend. I encourage, I will be looking forward to talking to you all on Monday, because I do believe this is a true equity issue. This is something that we need to look at and refine, and we, there's been a lot shown that with the advanced academic resource teachers, equity issues start to abate. So I just look forward to continued conversation with this, and ask my colleagues to reach out to me directly if you have questions that I can help you, you know, decide if this is the right time to do that, or if we could come to a compromise. And I would be...
Ms. Darnak, Kofax, I have Ms. Marin.
Yes, thank you. So I would like to see if we could put the AAP monies into that quarterly or year-end review, that pause option, and because I am actually hopeful that in reevaluating and redoing how we deliver education online, and then it could be that mix of scenarios in the fall, I think that we will actually have opportunities right there to be more equitable in certain ways. So I don't know what the answers are, but I just feel like we will be able to do that a little bit better. But I do look forward to talking more with others about it, so thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. Ms. Tolan?
Hi, yes. After reading the Advanced Academic Report, I certainly see the advantages of the Advanced Academic Resource Teachers and the Young Scholars Program. So I guess, in my previous comments, what I was getting to is I would like to support what Ms. Marin is saying, and relook at this a little bit later, once we've really had a chance to dive into that report and think about what might make sense moving forward. You know, I'd like to put this on a list to revisit at a later time, once we've had a better picture of all of our other budget requirements.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Mr. Frisch?
Yeah, I just wanted a clarification really quickly. For items being discussed at the end of the year, we don't need to do anything formally on that right now. The, correct, the items that we are discussing and not moving forward with today for the budget right now, and other items that we're not discussing right now, could be discussed at the end of the year or quarterly, whenever we choose to discuss them, right? We don't have a formal process for doing that currently.
So, Mr. Frisch, what typically happens is, and we've never paused before, I will let you know, we don't typically pause, but pause is the new, is the new word that they're using. What we typically do is we adopt our budget, and then at year end, if there is carryover funds, we look at using those carryover funds for non-recurring costs. So for things that we may not have, or for how we want to reutilize positions or different things. And so it's that year end, and then we will do it again at, in December, based on where the funding is at that point, unfortunately. And this year, what many of us are suggesting, and I believe that Ms. McLaughlin is going to do a follow-on motion with Dr. Anderson, is that we mirror the approach taken by the state and by the county, which would be not doing it just twice a year, but actually doing it quarterly at the same, right after we get more numbers from the state and county.
I understood, I think I understood that part. I guess what I was trying to articulate is that we could save time by not individually identifying things that we want to put on for discussion at that time, quarterly or at the end of the year, because we can do that with anything that's not included in our initial budget vote next week. So we don't need to identify those things today. In fact, we all withdrew many amendments that we may want to revisit for these later discussions that we decided were not necessarily front of mind for this current discussion.
That's correct. You are correct.
All right, thanks.
Ms. Seismarheiser?
All right, I like, that was one of my questions in terms of deferring to year end, but I agree with Ms. Tolan. I am a huge, I see from, I've read the report, I see the inequities in the report, as Ms. Darnak Kofax says, they're very clear in terms of equity of access, and I would like to take a deeper dive into it. I know we're talking about it on Monday, but I am concerned about a million dollar placeholder without doing the deeper dive, and the report also didn't go as much into programming as it did into access. And so I just would like to have the time to have more of a dive into both, both options, or both parts of it, to ensure equity and best practices in both equity, in terms of access and programming. So I would be supportive of putting this into July and discussing it then, as opposed to putting a placeholder now.
Thank you, Ms. Seismarheiser. Ms. Darnak, Kofax, is this a go-back you're asking for?
Yes, because I guess, I don't think it needs to be, the decision doesn't need to be made right now, you know? We can make it as the week goes on, but I appreciate, and I was starting to say that when my other colleagues chimed in, I'm not sure if we want to put it on in either way, July, or if we, you know, want to put it in this parking lot, which I'm a little uncomfortable because I don't know what this means, Ms. Corbett Sanders and Ms. McLaughlin, because you said, we haven't done this before. So, but I would, you know, appreciate a partial approach, and I do, because we're all talking so fast, I appreciate my colleagues that mentioned the two areas that the report focuses on in the equity areas. I keep referring to the advanced academic resource teachers, but also a little bit more of alignment of the young scholars programs. And I think both of those things can be done if, if, if we are in an online setting. And so I, I guess what I'll do, I'll talk to you in the budget chair as to see what would be the best use, and if I need to do a follow-on motion, and what I need to do to ensure that there are some funds, funding available for this.
Great, thank you, Ms. Darnak, Kofax. With that, we're going to go to the next item, which is the use of the term compliance in the description of the social emotional supports or restraint and seclusion specialist. Do I have anybody who wants to speak to that? Ms. Seismarheiser?
Yes, I was one of the, since I was one of the ones who brought up a concern about the compliance, I just think that two pieces. One, we need to address restraint and seclusion, absolutely, and the two pieces to it were the fact that they were happening, and needing more behavioral supports for our teachers, and perhaps training, and also the reporting piece. And this to me focuses on the reporting piece, and I feel like that the more important piece is prevention and support. So I would recommend maybe changing this to restraint and seclusion behavior specialist, where part of their job is the reporting piece, but the main part of their job is the support and training piece for our staff and principals, to ensure that they're using best practices to prevent the need for behaviors to escalate to the point of needing a restraint and seclusion. So that's my suggestion, is change from compliance and the job. I'd also like to know more about the job description, to know what the job description is focused on, whether it's focused on compliance as primary job duties or support. So those are my two concerns, is the title and the job description.
Thank you, Ms. Seismarheiser. I would support that approach, so if we could get a show of hands of who could support a change of the title, to take out the compliance and be much more, I would say interventionist or prevention specialist.
Point of clarification on that, I'm having trouble understanding how that would be different than counselor, or, you know, some of the staff that we already would have clear descriptions for, if we're broadening it like that.
I don't think counselors focused on restraint and seclusion, they don't tend to be focused on issues around, that primarily focus on special education. This is more of a behavioral piece, and there's also specific reporting requirements around restraint and seclusion that the counselors don't do. So that ought to me to jump in.
Sorry, sorry, I was thinking of the resource teachers, my mistake.
So Dr. Braybrand, I see your hand up. Would you like to address this?
I'd like Ms. Johnson to have a chance to give some feedback on the, on the role, and maybe some suggestions. Again, the board can make the final decision about the name, but Ms. Johnson, I think you are on, you had to log off and log back in. Do you want to speak to the title issue?
Sure, I'm sorry, I got baited off. I'm not sure what, what the title has been, what the discussion's been. So what did, what was the discussion around a change in the title?
The discussion is, the discussion is that it's called the restrained seclusion compliance specialist, and that they're looking about more than just simple compliance, but support, instructional support, best practices. Do you want to speak to whether a different word could be more all-inclusive than just simple compliance with the regulation?
Sure, I mean, I think that we could differently, definitely look at having this person be an educational specialist, and whether we call it, you know, procedural specialist, we could come up with something. An educational specialist is a broad title regardless, but looking at this position, there would be a lot of oversight related to incidents of restraint and seclusion, and a lot of collaboration with the Behavior and Intervention Services team. So originally, they wrote the job description to enable us to collaborate, this position to collaborate and integrate evidence-based strategies and practices and interventions to include like trauma-informed strategies and de-escalation management that would provide direct support to schools. So this person, we envision this person actually being deployed to assist school-based staff and administrators, teachers, et cetera, and not only reviewing data, but taking a look at the behavioral incidents and how we can support.
So Teresa, would it be, would your recommendation just be a one-word change? Take out compliance and add in educational specialist?
Yes, I think that would be a great idea.
All right, thank you.
Great, so if I can get a show of hands of who can support that?
Karen, I just wanted to make clear, it's not just the name, but it's also the job title, job duty.
No, I understand that, and that's exactly what she was describing, is to not be focused on the compliance, but more working in that area to, to provide interventions and support so that we don't get to restraining seclusion. It's more proactive.
Exactly, thank you.
So who can support that? We have more than enough for that, so we will make that change.
Can I just get a clarification?
Sure.
Was that, the title that Dr. Braybrand said, that would not be limited to special education, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Now we're going to the piece on special education resource teachers, and the question of the titling of that as well, to be broader than just special ed, but resource teachers to support our most vulnerable populations as they return to learn, or return to school. Dr. Anderson?
Thank you. I think you essentially captured what I was trying to, what I wanted to convey, which is to broaden that title, so it wasn't limited to special education resource teachers, but maybe just resource teachers, because we know that they're going to be working with our students, our tier one, two, and three students, which encompass both general and special education students. So I think I'm just looking for the first two words to be removed, and to just limit it to resource teachers.
Okay. Anybody else? Ms. Seismarheiser?
I understand, I understand what you're saying, but the one thing I want to be clear is that we, the Office of School Support and Project Momentum had an entire team that's been going on for years to focus on the vulnerable populations, but did not have any special ed component to it at all until last year, and then the one that last year was just focused on tier one. These are to focus on tier two and tier three, and they are focused on anyone who needs tier two and tier three supports, but it is to use the best practices that we've been using for our special education students and focus on those needs. So it's, I don't mind re-titling it, but the purpose of it is to focus on the need. So if, of our special education, tier two and tier three, working hand in hand with the Department of Special Services to provide those intensive, not intensive, but those supports to some of the most vulnerable students who had not been included as part of this to some of the most vulnerable students who had not been included as part of this team that works specifically into the school's boots on the ground to build that building capacity. So that's, it's an enhancement to the team, not taking over the team those positions existed. So I just wanted to kind of.
We have a lot of people wanting to talk to this. Dr. Brabran?
Yeah, you know, this may be able, I think I can help the board with this one. Um, the OSS team, we have a, we have a social studies person, a science person, a math person. So I'd like to suggest keeping the language around the special ed resource because we want someone with a special ed background who really understands differentiation of of instruction and meeting those kids tier two and tier three needs. But we can make the the language and the job description that that doesn't prevent that teacher as they go into schools and work in classrooms from supporting kids whether they have an IEP or not. They could have a 504. It could be an EL kid that could still benefit from the services of that teacher. So my my middle ground uh, thinking to this one is to keep the title, but we can make very clear in the job description that the work in schools is not limited to, oh, you don't have an IEP, I can't help provide services. So I think that could be the uh, the uh, the 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 best approach. That's my recommendation.
Ms. Kies-Gamara?
I I just had a question for Dr. Brabran, because in my mind, of course, I'm not, I'm not in your position, Dr. Brabran, but I'm wondering why we couldn't do just the opposite. And part of the reason is that, you know, I know when we start investing, once we market for certain categories, we begin to have legal limitations. And that's really where my concern is, because when we, when they get in there, certainly we want to make sure people have the training. But I don't know that that requires the label that you described. And so I just am am wondering what whether, what Ms. Uh, Anderson, Dr. Anderson suggested could be done with what you just described. And if that's the case, then that to me would be preferable, given some of the limitations I know that can arise.
So, Dr. Brabran, before you respond, what I want to do is get Dr. An, uh, Doc, first Ms. Cohen and then Dr. Anderson, and then I'm going to let you respond if you don't mind. Ms. Cohen?
Yeah, I just, I I really am concerned about the idea of of changing this language. You know, I feel like these positions were created for a very specific purpose. Meeting a need of have, having teachers who could coach up and coach down. Um, and there is such a huge need in special education for that. We do provide that in other areas. I'm not saying it's sufficient by any means. Um, but I I feel like this is really one of those places to 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 stand our ground about showing support for our special ed kids, but um, especially our special ed educators.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Um, I have Dr. Anderson and Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. Just kind of piggybacking on what Dr. Brabran shared, where some of the uh, expectations will be embedded in the job description. I would offer the following, embedding that the special education background be in the job description, but still broadening the title to include tier two and tier three. Still having the focus, but it doesn't make it so narrow that maybe some teachers or some staff feels as if they cannot access that person because they're just for special education. So I am just proposing again, uh, maybe it is a tier two and three resource teacher with the embedded expectation and the job description that they will have that special education background so that they can offer that support to all students who are tier two and tier three, with knowing that the bulk of those students would be special education students.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Ms. McLaughlin?
I just wanted to offer perhaps the way to approach this, similar to what I'd said earlier on the dropout prevention specialist. In theory, the board can be very supportive of where the division wants to go on this. I don't feel that in this conversation after three hours that it would be appropriate nor probably effective to start debating on the job descriptions, titles, purposes. I think Dr. Brabran has indicated he's hearing really great board input on this topic. Though I would almost hope we could tie in and saying that these are two areas where 20 out of the 40 plus FTEs of new spending, which the public wants to understand as much as the board. He could certainly bring this to us for more detailed conversation and we don't have to solve it in in today's um, discussion. Um, we're giving him the direction, but I think the oversight's reasonable to have him come back and bring that detail to us.
Okay, um, before Dr. Brabran and I also see Ms. Sizemore Heiser wants to speak. Um, I do have a question, which is if we add additional um, staffing into it and we tie it as special ed staffing, does that fall under our maintenance of effort requirements for IDEA?
Ms. Burden or Ms. Johnson, do you want to speak to the uh, maintenance of effort uh, piece in this context?
I I'm sorry, I'm having uh, connectivity issues. What was the initial conversation? I just caught that last part.
So as we, if we add additional resources in our budget and we say we're going to have this many people with serving just the special ed population, does that fall, then become part of our obligation going forward under maintenance of effort?
Uh, yeah, I'm, yes, I believe it would.
Thank you. That's what I was wondering. So if we don't keep it as, if we have it broader than, and it's recognizing that the majority of the services will be for special ed um, students or students with disabilities, but it does not have that in its title, then we may have, then the maintenance of effort, does that apply?
Uh, I I don't know. I would have to get clarification on that. Um, I don't, Greenfelder um, jumped in while I was off. Um, you know, part of the reason that we were looking at adding these special ed resource teachers is because the schools have been begging for them. And I think Mr. Greenfelder mentioned that prior to that. Because we already have math and ELA experts. So the piece of of calling them special ed resource teachers or to provide that expertise to the classroom and to the school supports.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Bra, uh, Ms. Sizemore Heiser and then Dr. Brabran's going to have the last word.
Um, so here's my concern is that the ELA supports, I understand, help support a lot of our English language learners. That's already in existence there in the OSS. Our math supports also help with that piece of it. I I'm kind of curious what the, other than maintenance of effort you mentioned, what are the legal limitations if there's special education needs? I I'm not sure what the legal limitations are of stopping um, general education teachers or or managing what the OSS works is identify a need either by gap or principal or parent to go support. I I'm not sure what the legal limitations are of supporting, stopping these resource teachers to supporting a need regardless of who flagged that need or who has that need. So I'm just confused by that sentence. Um, and I do think that it, this is the population that has the greatest teacher turnover, the greatest need, the greatest gaps and overlaps with many of our other populations that are being served. But these, the supports here and their expertise in special education is needed in this model that's embedded within the schools and regions. I'm a little confused by the legal limitations with that title.
Thank you. Dr. Brabran?
Yeah, I I, listen, this was very helpful and I think it helps staff as we uh, plan to execute this. Again, um, I'd like to take what Ms. McLaughlin said. There's a lot of information here. Um, right now I would not, um, you know, right now at 4:50 PM, I I don't want to change the title. I am interested in what Ms. Kies-Gamara and uh, Dr. Anderson shared about flexibility of how we use it. Um, even if we're looking at a primary audience, we are not trying to restrict or push away kids that might have those needs. So let me just work with staff and if we have ideas, we'll share, any updates, we'll share it with you before Thursday's vote, especially if it affects, uh, I think actually the majority of you voted for this. There was just some discussion about the name. And if we have an update, uh, actually we'll, we'll, I'll commit, we're going to provide an update by next Thursday, whether we recommend any changes to the name or to how we uh, we deploy it. And we'll, we'll put those in information out to the board prior to next Thursday.
Thank you, Dr. Brabran. So with that, um, the last piece of this meeting is next steps. Ms. McLaughlin, do you want to talk about our next steps?
Um, yes, I also invite Dr. Anderson to join me in this uh, quick portion. While we are about 15 minutes behind from um, our start to finish, I'm overall pleased we covered so much ground in this uh, time period. So colleagues, at this point, as um, I've shared in uh, recent emails of the last 24 hours, um, we will take uh, the items that gained additional majority board support. They will be rolled into the omnibus motion. We will, Dr. Anderson, I will work with Lee Burden and Dr. Brabran to uh, make sure everyone's clear on what that looks like. And then we will send that language to all of you as well as uh, post it for the public to know what the uh, formal uh, adopted budget language will look like. In the meantime, as many of you have already started, if there are follow on motions uh, that you would like to give direction to the superintendent, um, please continue uh, to refine that language and uh, copy both me and Dr. Anderson on your formal submissions to the clerk of the board uh, as well as chair of the board so that uh, we can start collecting those follow on motions. It will be very helpful again if you can also coordinate with each other. Uh, so when you have those available, do make sure you send a forward copy to your colleagues so we don't have duplicated effort. Um, and then if anyone does wish to uh, propose amendment to the budget, I would ask that you please contact me or Dr. Anderson first. Uh, we are trying to be respectful that board members had already since February created possible new spending amendments. Those have all been deferred to the year end review by support of the board. And so I want to be mindful and respectful that new spending amendments really should be following um, that year end review process. If you want to propose cost reductions to the budget, I caution against that at this time because board members won't have a work session to talk with staff about the potential harm to those operational cuts. Uh, so again, I ask you to contact me or Dr. Anderson. If you feel that strongly, uh, it's going to be important that we have some meaningful conversation before we bring uh, these types of proposals to the full board and um, the public. Dr. Anderson, did I um, leave off anything or anything else, please weigh in?
Um, no, I think you covered everything, but I I do know there are a couple of things that people just wanted to be sure that we were thinking about as we close out this meeting and moving into the next. So I'd love to give opportunity for at least for that to be broadly uh, to be at least shared uh, with the group here very quickly uh, before we move on and wrap up. But Megan, you captured everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. I have two hands up. Um, Ms. Cohen followed by Ms. Omeish. I'm going to keep this portion to no more than two minutes, folks, given that we are 15 minutes behind or 25 minutes behind. Thanks.
Thank you. I just wanted to make everyone aware um, that Ms. Omeish, um, Dr. Anderson, Ms. Pekarsky and myself will be putting forward an amendment um, to use the previously proposed elementary school principal parity pay in the amount of $400,000 um, to apply that towards counselors uh, in our, our media schools.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Uh, Ms. Omeish?
Yeah, thank you. I just um, wanted to share with my colleagues, I I guess based on um, Ms. McLaughlin's comment that we'll have a different conversation about this. But just to flag for everyone, the importance of two things, one being um, the English language support. Again, um, it's one of our uh, most vulnerable populations right now. Um, you know, there have been articles upon articles about how students are staying at home with very limited English access at all, so they potentially are going to regress in their development. Um, we know even from distance learning, when we were reviewing what the plans are, that it's very limited what we're even offering them. packets we've heard complaints about, they're not, you know, translated in languages that can be useful. So many different issues. And and the piece I want to highlight is currently there is no program for K through eight for English language learners over the summer. Uh, and this would offer some of those robust supports, uh, intensive attention to level one, two and two, as well as general supports for others. The second piece is, you know, the the piece Ms. Cohen mentioned only is going to be able to offer us six counselors based on the budget and the numbers. I'd love to see a little bit more support, um, which would have, you know, social workers, uh, psychologists and a couple more counselors. Um, that was my second amendment and I've po, you know, posted uh, delineated areas where we could potentially uh, save. But as we think about our entire community, I just want us to be mindful of of these different pieces, that these school based supports are what we've heard from the community about, are we're going to directly serve students. Um, and then the English language piece, you know, even if it's a community that can't necessarily organize and come advocate to us all the time, uh, I I've been hearing from them and it was the number one priority of the Minority Student Achievement Oversight Committee to me about the budget when I spoke with them, um, as their liaison. So I uh, I could speak to it more, but I sent you guys, of course, extensive rationale and I've spoken with uh, heads of staff departments and um, areas that we could see potential saving, savings to make the money for this. So I would hope for you guys' support when I bring it up.
Thank you, Ms. Omeish. Mr. Fresh?
Uh, thank you, Chairman Corbett Sanders. Uh, so Rashna Sizemore Heiser and I are going to be offering a follow on motion to direct the superintendent to develop a plan for ongoing uh, quarterly distance learning skill enhancement and professional development to make certain students, parents, staff and our technology platforms remain prepared for potential future use. Uh, such an approach will also be used to build student digital capacity and citizenship and to prepare them for the demands of post-secondary education and 21st century uh, jobs. Uh, and then Melanie Marin and I will be offering a follow on motion to direct the superintendent to create a comprehensive strategic communications plan for the system pertaining to communications with the public, staff, the school board and media. And we'll be circulating those plans uh, to our colleagues for future discussion.
You'll be circulating those motions?
Yes, thank you. Not the plans, not what we're asking the superintendent to do.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fresh. Ms. Pekarsky?
Thank you. Um, you and I will be offering up a follow on motion to direct the superintendent to develop a robust, comprehensive technology plan. And I think that pretty much speaks for itself, but I think we need to have a very clear idea of where we are and where we are going to be um, and how we're going to get there. So uh, we may want to talk with our colleagues about including um, some of the things they brought up on their follow on motion. But we, if you want to speak to that.
And that would also include the um, online learning campus. Thank you. Um, Ms. Sizemore Heiser?
Thank you very much. Um, also, Ms. Corbett Sand, Ms. Corbett Sanders and I, thank you. Um, we will be bringing together a motion to direct the superintendent to create an innovative approach for regular, i.e. daily, mental health and social emotional support for all students with a particular focus on engagement and wellbeing. We can see with COVID and potential need to go back um, into distance learning or a hybrid in the future, as well as a long-term impacts that the COVID um, situation has had on our students, there's a real need to ensure engagement, to ensure wellbeing and mental health supports, um, in addition, and build back that connection for our students. I would like to have an innovative approach that doesn't just focus on our counselors as they are very overworked, but it includes a broader approach to supporting our students' engagement and mental health being. We also are going to have a follow on motion to direct the superintendent to create a long-term remediation and mitigation plan for all students with a particular focus on those at most risk, such as our ELL students, our special education students, our high free and reduced price meal students, our students with inter education and those who are already experiencing achievement, attendance and. with inter-education, and those who are already experiencing achievement, attendance, and discipline gaps. And as we know, gaps were already existing, but all of our students are going to be needing some remediation and mitigation due to the effects of COVID-19 and, and distance learning and all of those pieces of it. And we need a plan that doesn't just address some of the supports this summer or next year, but some of these effects will be long-term. And I'd like to have a long-term plan for all of our students. So those are the two follow-on motions. I appreciate your support, working with me on this, Chair Corbett Sanders, so we can submit these together. So more information should be coming on those.
Thank you, Ms. Sizemore Heiser. Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, just wanted to detail for the public that, as noted, I'll be working with Dr. Anderson, that we will have a follow-on motion that captures the board's commitment that matches the Board of Supervisors on a quarterly review of the FY21 budget to examine where revenue changes occur and how that might create opportunities for compensation for employees, again, matching a partnership with the Board of Supervisors. And then I will also be talking with board members about a potential follow-on motion related to our dropout prevention program, getting more details for the board and the public on what that plan and implementation will look like. And finally, I'm considering one other follow-on motion about the $28.8 million that the superintendent has earmarked for new student enrollment. There is very limited details about how that largest chunk of our new spending will be done. So I think there will be benefit for the public and the board to understand how those new expenditures are going to be earmarked, because as we know, recurring funds become recurring funds. So those are my three areas of focus.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. And I, too, will be putting forward a follow-on motion with Vice Chair Darrenak Kofax on, and it builds on the very first follow-on motion I ever put forth as a board member four years ago, which was to increase transparency, accountability, and accountability in our budgeting process, to ensure that going, that we are asking the superintendent to provide a, as a plan with, which will include dates for accomplishing the operational review and the linkage between our operations and the strategic priorities of the school board. And I hold up our operational expectations that are in our governance manual, as well as the work that has been done on budgeting by some of our neighboring jurisdictions as examples of what we should be doing going forward. So with that, I don't have anybody else showing their hand. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Ms. Sizemore Heiser, do you have a go back? Thank you. So with that, it is 5:02, and this meeting is completed. So it is adjourned. Everybody have a wonderful evening.
Bye-bye.
Bye, everybody.
Bye, thank you.
Good night, everyone.